They've decided they're not.
We're good together.
So we had to fire the recorder to them. So we were hoping that they'd say. Try it. See if it actually.
So.
So I want to send it.
We want.
The board. Right, the black ones.
So the only person.
This is Alex. Alex told me this was the gear.
And this is somebody else.
Which means. That was really, really good. Or you've told him what to buy and now.
No, I haven't. I can't. I, I, he's way ahead of me on that.
It seems to work, so hopefully.
Okay.
I mean, is it.
So are we mentioned?
It's not.
We could.
That was the um. I could be telling that person how she's down. And you cannot be done.
Hey, some photos of the mixed ability.
Yeah, yeah, quite good. Bye.
Yes, it's always an order. It's fine. It's cold.
There's fish.
Those were jokes.
Oh, that's jokes.
I just. I think that's what you're saying. Ah, I just forget. As in public debate.
Yeah. I'm just going in your sock.
But we don't.
I'll start.
Eh?
I'm just.
Say, which one's stopping? Yeah, but. Who counts? How to.
What the hell. I've got that sign. Well, you know, once everything's happened for us, yeah. I was.
So not to make you feel any of them.
Yeah. You didn't need to say that, Dan.
So that is coming from Christine.
Basic colour. Six colour. Yeah.
And.
It's because that one, which went to your house.
We just.
That we now can maybe come to concept.
Really, really good. To.
It's going.
No, no, I wasn't. For details. Well, no, well, I've, I've got more here, but I don't know whether I can swap it around the kitchen to be smooth. Don't change the way you're planning to do it. It won't hurt that section.
You don't beat it. I can probably do that. Yeah. Yeah.
You know.
Who's leading?
Oh, no, no, he's got two.
I probably do. My mother's daughter has no doubt.
That, that is very good.
What did I say?
Treat this business.
Have it. Let him see. I can't see her.
Well, she's turned the stuff.
Oh, all right. Screen over there. We could stop like. Yeah, I'm sorry.
People? We're starting in about a minute, please. The, it's actually seven o'clock now.
Yeah.
Right. Good. Good evening. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the full ca- full meeting of Melcham Town Council. Uh, welcome to any members of the public. Uh, before we go any further, I'd just like to, uh, explain that we're actually doing a final test, a soft launch of our new A V system. So, uh, we're very confident. It's been tested very thoroughly. But, you know, with, with these sort of things, it's inevitable. There might be one or two things we still need to, uh, tweak. But, um, I think we're definitely now on the right track. So, um, let's start off for public participation. So let's welcome, uh, Pam Wiltshire. Are you there, Pam?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here, Colin. I'm just observing.
Uh, all right, so.
Okay.
You don't want to public participate.
No, not tonight.
Right. Thank, thank you, Pam. Right. Okay, apologies. Um, sorry.
Geez, right. That's why we need two screens. So you've got the agenda on there and.
Yeah. So apologies.
We need to make sure.
Well, I can do it.
There's a couple of public there. We just make sure they don't want to speak.
All right.
But these squires, David.
All right, um. Yes, Da- David? Um, you, you don't wish to speak?
No, I don't know.
Right, and we've got, uh, G Squires, um, showing on the screen. Hello? Hello, Mister or Mrs Squires? Are you with us? No? Okay, right, we'll make a start. Then apologies.
And it is live streaming on YouTube.
Yes.
Say that, yeah.
Live streaming on YouTube.
Good to know.
So, uh, the other thing, though, is if anybody listening from, listening online, if you've got any comments, you know, good or bad, please tell us. Address those to Jeff here at the town hall. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll take them on board because we want to, uh, make sure we get this deadline. So, apologies.
Yeah, from, um, the town mayor, councillor Hubbard, and from councillor Price.
Right. Okay, thank you. Uh, declarations of interest. Anybody wish to declare interest on any agenda item? No? Okay, questions from councillors? Do we have any? We haven't done any in advance. No? Okay. Right, minutes. Um, everybody seen the minutes of, uh, the last meeting on the thirteenth of December? Um, anybody have any comments on those minutes? Anything stopping us, uh, taking them as a true record? So I propose we do that, seconded by, uh, Jack, councillor Otley. And, uh, all in favour, please? Yep, that's unanimous. Okay, right.
It's on one side. It doesn't need two, because it's obviously on one.
This is the boring bit for anybody, uh, watching.
But it's important.
That important.
What, um, the deputy mayor's doing is signing all the loose leaf pages. That means that the minutes cannot be altered after, because you see a signature on each page. That's why it takes a bit longer and have a longer.
Yeah. And that was our own meeting. Um, right, uh, our mayor's announcement. So on the, uh, mayor's behalf, I will, um, make those. The civic reception, the mayor's civic reception on Friday, the twenty fifth of March, at the Assembly Hall. Um, all members are requested, please, to confirm their attendance to, uh, our clerk. I think that's the only, uh, announcement here. An item, something I would like to mention is that, um, I just want to share the news that we now have a camera in the skate park, uh, covering the whole skate park area and the complete surrounding area of the skate park. Um, I'd love to be able to show all sorts of pictures, but, uh, our clerk has, um, reminded me that we must follow correct protocols when it comes to public, you know, cameras in public places. So, in due course, you'll, you'll get a chance to see the evidence. But, uh, at the moment, you've only got my word for it, but they are really are, um, top quality images, day and night. They're wirelessly transmitted to the, uh, pavilion and, uh, we are working and will soon have access, remote access from the CCTV room here to the pavilion cameras, as well as the new skate park camera. And, um, we're also upgrading. And getting volunteers in place. So things have started to happen on the CCTV front, which I know a lot of people have been, uh, anxious to, uh, to see progress with. And, uh, the defibrillator is in action on the pavilion. And, uh, that is covered by the CCTV cameras I mentioned. So progress. That's it.
Yeah, the CCTV camera, it's all very exciting, but I just want to be reassured that the evidence in, you know, from, from these CCTV cameras, there will be some action taken from the police. Have the police got enough resources to follow these convictions through?
Well, uh, when we have had CCTV evidence in the past, I think it's fair to say that their response has been quite good. So we'll have to, uh, the thing to do, I suggest, is, is monitor, monitor it. And as their confidence builds up that you've got good quality evidence, I think that will be reflected in the priority they give to CCTV as well. From past experience, that is what happens. Um, answer, can do. Yeah.
But who's paying for the volunteers to be checked? Because you said they will be checked by the police.
Um.
Place for that.
Uh, Clark can answer that better than I can.
In the past life, I had an arrangement with the police because the CCTV volunteers were invaluable to the work that the police did locally. So I'm hoping that we can have it for free again.
It's not who, it's not the sort of guests who's going to fund it. I'm hoping we are one of the second, the second safest towns in Melcher. And I, I, you know, and you're invading our privacy for what? You know? How much crime do we actually have? Like, if you just extend use the skate park, they can stand you one to one down there. But and who monitors these people, the volunteers that are optioning these? Um, this is it.
No, it would be me as data controller. Um, um, I mean, this is, um, something the councils wanted. Um, I haven't approached the police about doing police checks because I'm hoping to get police radio for free as well. So, um, as far as that's concerned, I can't give you a cost if there is one for that. I will endeavour to find out, see if I can.
I just thought, if, if you're already getting the cameras, you would have cost you that beforehand. That's the usual way people.
Right, can, can I just, can I just, can I just?
I can add all to that.
For a moment. Let's see, uh, councillor Moore.
Um, all volunteers can have C R B checks then at no cost.
This is not a C R B check. This is a police check. Yes, a police check.
All right, the G B S checks and the.
Yeah, I know that, yeah.
She does. She did all our volunteers. And she also did, you can also get it so that you can be a G B S check. You know, more than one face, which I didn't, I did. But I did. And I got it full. Yeah, but you only need one, you know, you've got one for every. Can we also have a demonstration about, or introduce you to.
Yes, yes, we, we, we've just gone straight. Um, I understand your questions. Um, we, we need to, um, provide you with, uh, more information. You, you obviously are the way of the background to it. So, uh, we'll, we'll do that. Um, right, any other questions on that, uh, subject? No? Okay, if we move on to, uh, reports from unit three councillors. Um. Does, Phil, do you, councillor Orson?
Yeah, I was just going to give a verbal, quick verbal update, really. Great. Thank you. Uh, there are two things I'd like to discuss, um, or really highlight. The second, I've just looked on the council website, the, the, um, papers, the agenda for next week's cabinet. Publish, yeah. But of course, we will be, um, receiving a financial update and budget for next year. The proposed budget will be in there. That's not currently published, so I'm not going to talk about that. But that, I was expecting to be on there tonight. So if anybody wants to know what the thinking is in terms of the increase, um, to which councils, council tax, they can just look on the website. I'm afraid it it should be on by tomorrow because that, um, it needs to be published then. Published, it's published meeting. Uh, the other thing I want to mention was, uh, the cabinet meeting back in December last year on thirteenth. We had Worcestershire Cabinet Meeting and the issue of Melcham House came up. Um, I know it's been a bit of time and we'll be aware of this, so I'll probably drag it out. But essentially, I presented a paper and, uh, Worcestershire Council agreed to increase the budget for Melcham House was to four point two million, up from the previous two million, which was budgeted before. Uh, the intention there is to, um, include the restored building to, uh, um, that's fallen glory, but it'd be removing the, um, the modern extensions that are on the back. So they'll be removed. The building will be taken back to a more original state. It'll be, um, fitted out inside. The roof is being heavily restored. Um, so it will be heavily insulated throughout and it's going to be moved into a zero carbon facility. So there'll be no gas being brought into the building because it will be done using air source heat pumps. There will be eight parking spaces associated with the building as well. And, um, there's a space on the back, so there is plastic, but it's still P V as well. And there's going to be a couple of new charging points. But inside, it's going to be, uh, restored quite significantly. So that's a, an exciting opportunity. There was also a agreement to put in place a place board for Melcham. Now, there are place boards in existence at the moment for Troybridge, Salisbury, and, uh, Chippenden, Salisbury, one miracle set apart from the Novichok incident. And the idea of the place board is where you bring together stakeholders within the community, um, who own various sites throughout the town. You look at ways in which you can, um, work together, work with parish, work with, um, like they have a key stakeholders, work with the town, make sure you've got comprehensive understanding of a sort of vision of the town, really, and where you want it to move forward to make it resilient and sustainable over the next fifty years. And the idea is you, the place board will bring everyone together. And then it will sort of, for want of a better word, master plan a future um, for, for investment and development within the town. So that's been set up. And, um, it's exciting to, be quite excited to see what's involved in that. And obviously to play a role as a town council too. In addition to that, we've also, um, there are a couple of sites that I know are aware of around the town, such as the library and the Blueport site, that are going to be redundant in about six months' time, seven months' time when the campus opens. So in order to put people's minds at rest, I've, um, I, I've got offices together to work on a sort of, uh, a, a, a short activity, or at least a fast track activity to work with town. Um, to discuss what should happen to this public and sites. And to make sure people's minds are at rest. Because the last thing I think we want is to have this fantastic canvas open with bloody immersive spinning rooms and all sorts. And then to have these quite, um, rear mysoles dotted around the town, just boarding up. So we don't want that to happen. So we're going to move forward, um, as efficiently as possible to sort of, you know, bring peace of mind and to, to find a future for those particular sites. And of course, that is the foundation, basis on which I've put motion into council and into one, um, which we can discuss later. That's essentially my day.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Phil. Um, does anybody have any questions for, oh?
Can you clarify on, and there are no banging abouts all the time, EV charging points, because the original plans for Melcham House have more parking spaces and two EV charging points for ducting going in for further ones for the future, the future fruit pits?
Yes.
Is that still planned? And what speco charging points would be?
I don't know at the moment. The contract, I don't think, has been purchased for the charging, uh, uh, the EV charging points. Plus, can, any of the work's been done? I remember, actually, covered forward or not. But there is plans to have the EV, um, charging points in place. And I think they're going to be done up and down the county over the next eighteen months. So, um, whatever we put in will be built to that spec. So it will also be maintained within that. However, um, we'll wait and see what happens to Melcham House. And maybe if someone comes forward, we've had a couple of organisations who are quite interested potentially in taking it on as a, uh, a premises to lease. So if that were to happen, then obviously they would be involved in, in that specification.
Can we make sure, please, there is future proof as possible because the situation we're in now, that existing charging points now not being set. You can't be doing this.
Yeah. 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 So finally get under an older contract, which is redundant now. So, um, I, I think one of the things is that's the margins increased with the electric cars as well. And of course, the, the infrastructure will be maintained and uh, uh, and kept up together to our fire, more consistent, nine standard, as we saw before. Um, but again, it, it also comes down to, to what the new user wants. And, uh, you know, we might want to be involved in these discussions at a later point. That's really, that's what's at play for that, really. Yeah.
Uh, councillor Hold.
I think I'm right. Campus can't go ahead until the works of Melcham House is, is that right?
No, no, the, um, the, the planning condition for the campus was that the future of Melcham House needed to be secured as the listed building adjacent to it, and as with the ends. So, um, the campus is expected to go ahead and open. Um, the building is slightly ahead of schedule, actually. So the expectation is we'll go in there and everything will crack on fine with the campus. Um, we're expecting sort August, September opening, uh, around there. But we, we only need the future secure, really. And now the budget's in place. And the demolition works are going to begin fairly soon, if not, um, I think they have started already on back Melcham House. So that in itself is the i- i- is the sort of running programme to last construction phase now. So it's all, it's all going. So it's all, it's all going. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have some questions for councillor Orford? No? Okay, thank you. Um, councillor, do you have anything to add?
That's why I feel it's brief before, uh, uh, no, I need to echo like the stuff in the budget without.
Okay, thank you. Right, item seven, uh, accounts. Um, everybody should have this information in their, uh, in their packs. A list of payments, uh, pages thirteen to sixteen. Uh, need to approve those. Those are payments made by direct debit and, uh, debts. And, uh, they will have been signed off by, uh, uh, two councillors already. But if anybody, uh, has any questions, uh, councillor Mortimer?
Um, we've, we've got the, um, cost of the female of the species. I'm just using that as an example. What I think would be interesting, interesting and be useful is if we had a breakdown of any income receipts. Yeah, we've got a total, you know, I mean, it's probably mostly just the assembly hall. I think it would be useful to have a breakdown of those receipts.
Income shown on the budget, so we didn't ask to detail all income, everything.
Right, so it will, it is show, it does show well.
Doesn't like it up into individual.
Does it break it down to the assembly hall?
Assembly one, yeah.
Yeah.
I just think it was useful when you see a cost, if you could see an income, you know, you'll get all that. Just a list of breakdown of receipts, the same thing, got a breakdown of things. It's just what I'm asking for.
It means noted, noted that?
Can you remember note the extra words that's going to fall off?
That's, I think, something to, uh, discuss as well. But you'll, the points taken from that. Um, okay, and the list of payment, uh, any other questions? On the payments, um. So we need to.
We need a reservation for that, you can do it for both, one reservation for both, because provided members are happy to approve.
Yeah, um, okay, if we look at, um, those were from the, uh, fraud bank account. The, from the Lloyd's account, uh, the same goes for, um, those payments which are also shown. So it are councillors happy to approve those? Or anybody want to raise anything before we do? So I.
Is that just paid, except for a couple of quid? That's on the income expenditure, so this is a pen.
These are just payments, yes. So from the chair, if I propose that both those lists, that we approve those, councillor Raby?
Yeah.
So.
You were saying?
Yep, thank you. Um, all in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous. Right, petty cash payments, um, payments made by petty cash, so that's seven, item seven point two. Any comments on, um, on those or? Is, as I say, these have been approved individually by two councillors, but do you accept, um, does everybody accept these are in order? So I propose in the chair that we accept those, seconded by councillor Orney. All in favour, please? Thank you. And then month, the, uh, monthly financial statement, uh, we just need to, uh, note the monthly financial statement.
Yeah.
Every, uh, councillor Orford?
I can't believe we're seven. It's twenty five, we've got some third on the notice in hand. Um, and on the budget when they have.
The statement, not that. Gender item seven point.
Mentioned.
That one.
Seven point three, yep.
What ages are we looking at there then?
It's gender item seven point three, monthly financial statement, thirty first of November. What members are noting.
It's aged in nineteen to twenty, yep. Is that? Yeah. So are we accepting that or do you have a question? Yep, okay. Right, so that's, uh, that's noted. Um, detailed income and expenditure, again noting the, uh, report.
That's right, got a couple of.
Pages twenty one to thirty.
Yeah.
Yep.
On page twenty three. There's a, uh, in a three hundred and fifty pounds, which looks like a quarter payment. I just wondered what windows within the.
Not the town hall, and it is quarterly, yeah.
It's fourteen.
Cool.
And year to windows.
Right.
And it's almost, um, on page twenty five.
Twenty five, yeah.
It has some solar money project coming in, thirty eight thousand six hundred and twenty, which was against a budget of forty thousand on the budget. That's actually been allocated to the earmark reserves, and I just wanted, if that can be done the same. What we've got the forty, which has got the thirty eight, who hasn't actually gone anywhere.
It won't until the year end. You don't, you don't reallocate the funding to earmark reserves till the financial year is finished. And you know exactly what your financial, um, position is on the thirty first of March.
Um, that would be useful to see it as you go along. Other earmark reserves going as it goes along.
They go in at the end of financial year because otherwise, you know, you don't know what's going to happen between now and then.
They, they would go in as, um, an earmark reserve and then if anything is used, it would come out.
Yeah, let's pick up that, let's pick up that outside the meeting. I mean, the point you've raised, we need to either agree that it can't be done or. It's done different, whatever. We discussed it outside the meeting, but, but you've made the comment and that's been noted, yeah.
I think the reason you've got to keep the income in the income is because these, um, are local government accounts. And we have to show what income we've had. And it has to stay in this year's, um, budget reports until the end of this financial year, that's the reason. If you were going to spend against it, you would be able to see it. It won't go into the earmark reserve for solar farm until the end of the financial year.
Well, the solar money has gone in the actual year today. I'll discuss the new issue.
It, it's, it's very important that, that we resolve it and you're, you're happy. So we need to deal with that afterwards. I'm not suggesting we, uh, just gloss over it, but we're going for that. You've got a note, Sue, of what you've raised, yeah.
So, no, the, the still money was added on the first of April after the thirty first, um, page thirty, the actual year today.
Okay, are you happy to move on then? Uh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, earmark reserves, same to, to note that, uh, report.
Yeah, I mean, that's the seal, what was, yeah, off on the seal during the year, it was actually added on to the earmark.
As I said, that, that was added to the seal on the first of April. If you look at the seal for this year, to date, nothing.
I'm looking at page thirty one.
Yeah, so am I. That was probably in, added in the year on the first to the fourth. If you look at the balance.
I'm sorry, I must be looking at something different because I've got the balance on the first to the fourth, twenty twenty one. It's twelve thousand and added in the year, I've got eighteen thousand in many years. This is what I'm looking at, and I just thought that the solar money would have been treated in the same way. Thank you.
We'll, uh, we'll come to an agreement, we'll see whether there's any standardisation or whether there's a difference that we need to accept. Sue, yeah, we won't be. Okay. Um. Right, into. Yeah, sorry, councillor Orford.
Um, what's caused us to go thirty percent over the town development budget? I can't remember what page it's on specifically, I'll just quickly.
I think there's been some miscodings which I identified before the finance meeting last week.
It's been page twenty seven. Leaving two thousand pounds over budget. I was just wondering if there are any projects that forced us to exceed that.
Yeah, the, um, the water fountain outside has been coded to that, but.
You want to read the email?
Yes, this is the one, um, the town development, where you have a general, been doing on priority people. Um, um, I don't, I think some prizes for the in bloom competition have come out of there incorrectly. It's been adjusted now and it is, um, as it should be.
Exactly.
Yeah, I was just going to get it last week, just the one that we've been forth for now. But it already financed, yeah, but it won't show until next month. Budget, um, reports, because it's been done in this month. Well.
Yeah, you, you okay?
Okay, yes, okay.
Right, we need to, um, we need to approve that, uh, in turn, the, uh, internal audit report. Uh, pages thirty three to forty four. Um. Hopefully you've had a chance to, uh, look at, uh, to look at that report. And, uh, to note the actions taken. You should see a summary of the actions taken in line with the recommendations of the internal auditor. And, uh, we need to approve that. So. Any questions from anybody? So.
That's pretty. I think our officers come out quite well in that report. Um, so thank you and congratulations as well, officers that have worked.
Yes, seconded, definitely. And, and the responses seem to have covered all the, uh, points that were, uh, that were made. Which were fairly, fairly minor. Um, okay, so from the chair, I propose we accept, uh, we approve that report and response. Seconded. Um, councillor Forja, and all in favour, please? Right, that's unanimous? This is unanimous, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, committee minutes. Uh, Community Development Committee. Uh, we've, you've got the minutes there, pages forty five to forty eight. And the recommendations, you're, we're asked to consider and approve these. Uh, to allocate four thousand pounds from the green space earmark reserves to support funding applications for the Jubilee Tree Project. And to support the motion to hold quarterly art beat festivals showcasing, uh, local performance. And performers and artists with a budget not exceeding ten thousand pounds per annum to be met from general reserves. And this was proposed in a motion from, uh, from there. Um, please.
Do you see these points as individual things to base on?
Um, there are two, there are only two items under, in that, under that heading. Um, well, we, we could, let's see.
And what all members are doing now, you're receiving the Community Development Committee minutes. Um, but from two meetings were two recommendations to cancel, which are the bullet points. So I, I would suggest if it's right with you, Chair, that you do the first one. You'll see what members support that. And just for background, there's eleven thousand six hundred and thirty two in the earmark reserves for green spaces. And then the other one, the, the motion from the town mayor, which was supported by community development and recommended to cancel to approve. Does that help?
So, so we'll go for the first one, the first one, which is the, uh, the allocation of, uh, four thousand pounds from earmark reserves. Yep, for the trees. So. So, off the person. Okay, proposed councillor Orney, seconded by councillor Pendel. Tom. And all in favour, please? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the second item, just for the motion, the heart, the heartbeat motion. Um. As the cloud says, this, this was, um, this was approved by the, uh, uh, development, Community Development Committee. It's a case of, um, supporting that motion if, uh, if you're in favour of it. It's quite a detailed motion. Get the speech of that. Yes, certainly.
Um, under the earmark, seven thousand pounds from general funds for basically, uh, basically for four events. That's two and a half thousand. Now, is that, is there any income coming in from those events or is that an expenditure or the cost? Is that the cost or a? Well, is, is there an income against that?
So there is a predicted income, in worst case, we are underwriting.
Ten, maybe a pound, we're going to get to one point three.
All right.
Yeah, we've got this, I mean, it's left you, income of two hundred and twenty, sorry, income of two and a half thousand. But then the expenditure of twelve and a half thousand, which was, which has been for ten thousand, let me guess, on that way back.
Uh, there wasn't, we're not showing any, oh, sorry, councillor Orford?
Well, it's what I recall, there was some income, not a way to, it wasn't going to cover the whole lot because all the people that are coming to, um, who workshop here and that, all these things, but who is to be charged for some art there? Not all, but nothing was decided about that, there was nothing even said about that. So I'm assuming that there will be a small income, which doesn't like.
Right, so just, just to have a reminder of the study then. We're looking at about two and a half thousand, two and a half grand for the weekend. Let's say that actually we spent two thousand, two and a half thousand, that's very rough, yes. Um, and that compares, because it's on, we're looking at, it's like the female of the species, the highest expenditure we had. Where for a weekend there, we were spending a thousand, but probably getting the fair amount to that back through bar and other income. So actually we're spending a lot more money here per weekend than we are on standard events, which I understand with deputy Clark, the last one is about pre the twenty eight. Just trying to use the name.
Um. Councillor.
Mine's telling you, this is more about giving to the community and giving to local residents and owners. It's not about hiring big acts like female and species, it's just giving smaller bands who don't get that FaceTime out to the public an opportunity to actually perform for the community. So it's actually more about giving performers back and our residents an event over a weekend, which they can participate in workshops, be, go to a gig. If they're into classic music, it might be a page of Brian, that's passing, it's actually a nice rock band.
Yeah, I understand that, councillor, maybe I'm looking at the relative cost of the council of the various different events.
I, I haven't finished, but.
Sorry.
I think you made the, the, the point that it's. I think you made the point that it's for the wider community, which is very different from an event happening in the, in the hall or a hall. Councillor Orford? Sorry?
I was going with that's for the wider community.
But yes, but this, this, um, uh, hey. Uh, councillor Orford first.
Yeah, and I think the events are going to be free, because I think for two and a half thousand, if you can get people, like you had at the River Festival, then I think it's well worth it. I went to the River Festival in Bath for May. I went to the River Festival in Bath for May, and they charged seven pounds, and they, they had about seventy people there. So I think to put on a free event. You know, and that'd be much, that'd be probably just same sort period as the River Festival, I didn't want that cost, probably cost us during half of three thousand. I think it's very difficult, we get people.
Well, I was just thinking, if you give, it's just to give these people a chance to perform, why don't you include them in the River Festival or Party in the Park? Along with well-known acts, so then you would get some revenue back.
I know the idea of this.
We're not a bottomless pit, we have to budget for all our money, and many people actually have, you reckon?
I don't know, it's free.
I don't, I'd be working, so one less and less, but, you know, there's lots of people that can't get out. That's one worry about, well, that's we could address that, that's we could get them out, you know, so, yeah.
The idea of this is to, is to make it, is for it to happen over a year in four sections, so that's, that's a fundamental difference here. So. Please, councillor.
My worry is, having gone back over it, obviously I'm in the Community Development Committee. Is that I know that the staff are really, really stretched at the moment, and I think asking presumably Miriam. To organise this and to put it on every quarter, I think at the moment, I think it's a lot to ask our team today, considering that they're struggling.
I do know that the, that this was one of the three events that was decided we would handle over a year. And beyond that, we wouldn't, because that was stretching stuff too far.
It wasn't decided, it's these three. Three things that go from four to the full council meeting, I understood, and obviously I'm, I could well be wrong, because I'm very new to that. So I presume you were bringing it, we were bringing it here for us to actually say yea or nay, and also I was under the impression that. And I, I realised John isn't, isn't here today, but that he was going to look into funding for it, and we haven't even touched on anything. How it's going to be funded, looks, I'm presuming now it's like. You want it funded from the town council, whereas before it wasn't, it was in the advances.
No, both lines are in the minutes. So it's actually two lines in the minutes about it, one about research funding, two, two, and then below, this is unanimous, as a result of your committee motion for the event with funding of lots more than ten thousand pounds over the year. If you read your minutes.
I have read it.
Split into two parts.
But I, well, I was obviously reading it a little bit differently. And you guys.
We, we need to, sure, we need to tariff this somehow, don't we?
So in the full council meeting, it's when it took for the full council for us to look at the discussion, I was going to introduce the committee, the reason would be the same, we'd be meeting as assigned. So there's a difference there between the two segments.
I must be reading it. Semantics for me, and there's the, the motion for the full council is a per annum cost. Whereas I was under the impression that it was the four events, is this a rolling? Four events per year that we're asked to vote on?
Uh, this.
But it will just be for the one year.
Four events over the one year.
Yes, and so we're not voting for one year.
So what does it say, what does it say for the year?
Yeah, that's, that's why I was.
So that, so that implies one goes.
Yeah.
Yes. That's on the minutes, yeah.
These stuff for today to stop creation of, however, unfortunately, if I'm showing it in open books, with a budget not exceeding of ten thousand pounds per annum to be met from general reserves. Implication of per annum, it is certainly is anticipated to be a common year's class.
I think.
That's right, uh, excuse me, can we just, councillor.
I don't recall any discussion wanting every year, because to be fair, if it was judged to succeed, I could see no reason why.
Yeah.
It would not be followed, but at the moment, it was only planned to be this year, three events or four?
Four.
And, and I mean. My, my memory of the proposal was that it was just being looked at. And that we were going to be providing information from Miriam, and anybody else who works on it in the office. But nothing had been fixed in stone at all, and as for the ten thousand per annum, that is not right, it was ten thousand this year.
It was this year, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd like to challenge that with this, with the minutes, because at no point did I hear per annum.
Right.
I think the agenda item is actually misleading, the red, the recommendation should have been the resolution exactly as it was written in the minutes. Because it doesn't say in the minutes per annum, it says over a year. So it's the, it's the agenda item that's misleading, not the resolution by the Community Development Committee.
So. Um, right, councillor.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I'll just, yeah, they said it, perhaps the, the recent past, where it wasn't that meeting, and they could have had their demonstration then when it was brought through. What was, what was said at that meeting, which was meant to come to this meeting, today, I'm the chair of the, the Community Development Committee. Was that the community development officer and the town mayor, cast public research into funding opportunities and meet and go away and do their other bits and bobs. What I had to come to council here was, is because it wasn't budgeted in the budget going forward for this arts. Festival, whatever we're going to call it, and that the motion was that they had to get ten thousand pounds from general reserves funded to fund it for just this year. And that's why it's came to this council to be approved.
Thank you. Councillor Pendle.
Thank you, I was, so, so we voted as the Community Development Committee to. To overwork Miriam, because we've got three projects, just add into it, to go away and look for, quote unquote, funding opportunities. If this passes today, does that commit Miriam as the sort of needed officer to, to, to run this? I'm only asking within the context that she's, she is actually currently setting up the climate committee, which is a huge undertaking and priorities. I'm just wondering, with the Community Development Committee committed her to going and helping to look for funding opportunities, but is she the officer in charge?
Councillor.
Uh, no, it was discussed at that meeting about Officer Time. And this arts festival was one of the three things that came out of the Arts Working Group. And so we asked the Arts Working Group to go away and come up with three projects, they did this, and this just expanded on that, on the Arts Festival, I'm right in thinking. And that was written in those, in those arts projects, so as I'm aware, the Officer Time is there, because it was said that we would do these three works, but I suppose that Linda is the best person to probably ask for guidance, Officer Time.
I got the impression Miriam was green.
Um, yeah, if you remember, there was a discussion on community development, because I expressed concerns about Officer Time, especially with Miriam. I'll support Miriam as much as I can and grant funding, and I've got a reasonable track record, you know, I don't mind doing some work in that respect, and. Already we've discovered that it's quite a good event for what we're trying, what the council might want to do. It will, it will be open to grant application because of the nature of what's trying to be achieved. And, but I mean, I will have to just report back if, if the Officer Time is, is, well, is stretched too far, because. Like you said, the Climate Environment Working Group, I went through the action plan that was agreed the other day with Miriam, and it is an excellent work, but there's an awful lot to it.
It is, my concern, I appreciate your input on this, because I just had, as you, councillor Mortimer, and I sat down with Miriam. And, and Shirley as well, and we've essentially given her a mammoth task to undertake.
No. It's not, it's not just Miriam involved in that, I'll, I'll be supporting it, and so is Patsy, my deputy. I mean, it is, you know, it's, it's up there in terms of how important that is.
So you're very confident she can assess how the work will affect.
And I've had a chat with Miriam and said she must come to me if she feels that she's under too much pressure, and we'll, we'll see what we can do, but before it gets to the point where it's too much.
Very confident she can assess that.
Doing this task with completing the action plan for the Environment Climate Working Group, doesn't mean she's doing all the actions. And, and I'm on that as well, the action plan is hopefully going to be agreed this Thursday evening.
But it's. She's obviously ten, she's.
No, Patsy don't. We decided that the task of finish group being you, Shirley, who are very, just to complete the action plan. And the action plan then comes back to the working group on Thursday evening, and we're going to discuss it and decide. What we're going to prioritise over the four-year period of this council, so it's not all going to be done immediately.
No, we're, that's one.
Yeah, I know, but, so from Miriam's point of view, there are other officers. Miriam was just tasked with completing that action plan with the task of finish group, doesn't mean.
Being Jack, that she's going to do it. Are you, are you happy, Stalin, with that? The problem is. Councillor Alford.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I suppose my, my concern really is the proposal's a bit. A bit woolly, don't say, it is, we haven't got a firm plan, we don't know exactly what is being proposed here, I think, we've got four festivals. Over the course of four weekends scattered throughout the year. Um, we don't know the themes, do we know the themes, do we know who's going to be at them, do we know what money can be achieved through grant funding? We're asking for, for ten thousand pounds, not budgeted for. And therefore to be taken out general reserves, and I think there's a risk, this sets a bit of precedent as well, because. Any proposal now that comes forward, if, if we agree to this. It, it sets the sort of tone, doesn't it, we just take anything out of general reserves, we don't need to have. Really be working to a budget, if we just start pulling stuff out of general reserves, on a bit of a whim, so. For me, I'm not comfortable with the way it's being funded, I don't see an actual tangible plan. I'm not convinced by the outcome to this project at the moment, I mean, I appreciate that we want to support local artists, but. I don't think this personnel has particularly good use of, of the precept, we've got other competing pressures. They'll be asked for ten thousand pounds for season to me tonight, we're going to be asked for additional money, we know people are coming forward to us for grants. And I'm just not convinced that this is going to give us a worthwhile outcome for the investment that we're looking at, and, and I think. In terms of being able to get some income back from it, again, I'm just not convinced, I don't think we're going to be able to pull anything in life. Yeah, I, I, I can't see it working.
You've made the point. Yeah, you've made the point, now, uh, okay, it, it was.
Proposals, it might be interesting.
Yeah, I've got to let Jackie have it, first, yeah, councillor.
Well, we, we have people applying for grants, and we, and we allocate the money so that we could budget for it, I mean, that's the normal thing you do, I mean, why didn't they apply for a grant? And if, if it, if they won't, if they haven't got the money, why don't they wait and apply for the grant for the next lot of budgets, so that we can actually budget for it? I mean, you don't probably just spend money, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. We have the system in place where they can apply for a grant. So why can't they apply for a grant?
Okay, your point is taken, councillor Raybe.
I was just saying, personally seconded the proposal originally, having discussed it in Christ of Death, John, the broad outline of how it was potentially look would be. Friday night would potentially be something along the more lights relaxing, maybe classical evening focused event. Saturday would potentially be a live band, so more of your. Pop band, pop band, whatever, so more of a lively event, Sunday would be about workshops, and those workshops could potentially be pottery, crochet, you know, things, crafts, pieces of. This event in that programme, that workshop, if, I'm presuming that, I don't know, tell me, Linda, this is one for you. If this went through, like we said, yes, we are allocating potentially up to earmarked reserves to realise this, is there a caveat that that money is only, sorry, I just finished that, I was talking to Linda. Is it, does that mean it has to happen, or? Can it come back with a plan that then, we then take it off, or?
Yeah, no, it's not, you're not committed to providing that, those four weekends, just because you're earmarked ten thousand from the general reserve. If it was discovered or found out that it wasn't feasible, and, and the costs were exorbitant and totally out of the mark, I'm trying to. We're trying to get John's original motion put up on the screen.
It is.
So you can read the concept, but yeah, we're, we're not obliged, because we haven't approached any more, as far as I know, we haven't approached any funds or. Nothing.
No.
No.
You go to the start of it, please.
Right, so can you all see that on the screen now? Really has been given quite a lot of thought, and will be, would be quite wide-ranging.
Been costed in there. The higher of the assembly call, is that costed? Or is that, is it just a given that the council will make the assembly call available, and therefore stop anyone else from hiring it? So some estimates of non-staff costs have been made for two and a half thousand pounds per weekend, so I'm presuming that two and a half.
The higher, yeah.
That's what it is, I think.
First.
No, that's fine, and I think my misunderstanding has come from me being in the working group with Pat, Miriam and John, and discussing it. And then it moving to here, which is John and Staffies, you've, you've just made it big, like, looked at details, et cetera. And made it and moved it on, so that's where my, I'm not cohesive. You know, at all, and I'm like, well, that's why I was there, and that's.
I think that one, yes.
I, I, I like the idea, and I find it quite interesting and exciting concept, and it. I don't want to call it a water, but I don't think you know enough about it, but I was expecting and hoping for more detail. I mean, at the moment it's just all ideas, you've got the idea, but there hasn't been any kind of definite. Things about it, for example, any grants, we don't know yet if there are any grants, or have they been applied for, I mean, obviously, also hasn't been any. There's been no meetings, there would have been, but it's been like that, I would like to propose that we don't. Decide anything tonight, that there's actually another meeting that we're committing very soon, so you can actually make these decisions and do something, take some actions. And then bring back some actually definite actions to the full council. Where else can I go?
So, talking about. Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. And I.
Is that, was that your proposal?
It is.
Yeah, and who's seconded?
But you have more definite details and, and a plan of action, and some action is taken, and, you know, and move it on in a, in a way so that this, this council can actually make a decision.
Yeah, that, that, that does sound to me to, to be a good way forward, because there was a really strong feeling that this is very, very. In line with what people would support, but yes, you need more detail. Councillor Raybe, no? That's unfortunate.
I was just going to say, so is it maybe general?
And as you can see, they offer.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, I, I quite, quite agree with Pat, and I was going to say that I'm really surprised that we're being. Asked to vote on money when we have no idea of the costing, or whether it's viable, workable, how everything's going to work. Whether, you know, what it's going to be, everything, everything, it's like, here's an idea, we want this much money.
Well, yeah, point, point.
Well, so yeah, absolutely.
Councillor Mortimer.
I, I just feel that it's probably came about in this way, because there's a lot of work got to be done now to, to find out what, you know, what we are going to, how it is going.
To, to find out what, you know, what we are going to, how it is going to work. And it's not to say we're accepting the ten pounds. They can come back and, and give us the idea and then if we're happy with it. But I mean, if they're going to go away and work on some things and take, you know, hours on it. You know, I think it's come this way first, so that, so that people are internally acceptable to the idea. And I mean, people are always saying there's nothing going on in the auction. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to get things done. I mean, I take on board what Jackie says, and I think if it does go ahead, I would like us into some way to see how we can get. People out of their homes who can't usually come out of their homes. It could be a good opportunity to make accessible to them.
Yeah, the, the, the hope was that it could go ahead on that, on that basis, but I'm not sure we're actually there yet. Councillor Hunt.
If I remember rightly, from the Condev meeting, we were actually going to bring to full council about setting up a working group anyway. Uh, yeah, if I remember rightly. Um, so actually, yeah, I, I agree with Pat that we need to put together that work. Get more detail and then before we start funding it, yeah.
Right, so we've got, we've got an agreement in principle. We've got an agreement in principle that it would be a good idea if it was backed up with a plan and more costings and so on. Is that fair? Fair comment?
That's it, right.
Um, okay, so we want to, we want to put forward, is to put forward that motion.
Yeah, so, um, councillor, it's about taking it back to the committee, um, to, um, drill down some more, into some more details. Um, and then bring it back to council with some more detailed costs and hopefully. Indication of grant funding that would be available, so that way.
Yeah.
I'm probably going to say, I just, you know, can I go ahead and set up the working group?
Yeah, there's no instruction anywhere so far to set up a working group.
Set up by major office support.
Yeah, working group will require another meeting another evening, yeah.
Yeah, I'll take and come back on the plan later.
Miriam and I can sit and have a chat tomorrow, and we can, maybe do, not tomorrow, sorry, next week.
So, so the motion then will, will include that. A group, that a working group formulates a more detailed plan?
Yes, yeah, just during the.
There isn't a working group set up at the moment.
No, do we have to call it something else?
Just go on another one.
Um, I think it's hilarious.
Call it, but call it a working group, because. Um, that, like, we, we can sort out to make.
Got an idea.
Working group, it's a day, thirty five weeks. And then we can come back to the next full council with something. Yeah, maybe just set up a working party tonight.
I, I've got an idea if members go with it. Uh, Miriam and I can sit down. We've both been involved in stuff like this before, so we know where to go for grant funding. I think I've got an idea of what's trying to be delivered here. Um, and we do a little bit of work and if needs be, um. Call an extraordinary meeting of the community development committee before the next council meeting. And then do it that way.
Yeah.
That will save having to do a working group. And it's not that I'm against working groups, it's just, there's only five nights a week.
I know.
I do.
Yes, I know.
This sounds a good idea. Do we need, does that?
I think so. It's a slightly different to what you, um, proposed, but if that helps, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so.
Um, the I will, I will work with the community development officer, will explore grant funding opportunities, get, drill down some more detail than actually what's trying to be achieved. Um, and maybe do a bit of market research and find out whether local bands would, would want this kind of exposure. Yeah, yeah. And then, um, if, um, we get enough detail, um. To, for me to call an extraordinary meeting of the community development committee. So, because it's only fair that it goes back there, because you've recommended it to full council, but only because you don't need a general reserve to fund this. And then they will make a recommendation to full council if there are any financial implications which are required from the general reserve.
So, that sounds like a good way forward. Um, does anybody want to raise any point that hasn't already been raised?
Thank you so very much.
No, okay.
Oh, Louise.
I was going to raise a point, because I think everybody's already agreed that we want to fund and to help all these local things or whatever. But there's this sort of big open pond there, and we don't have help.
Yeah.
So on that basis, I'm supporting Pat.
Right.
Rather than doing any other proposal, Pat, don't worry.
Is everybody happy on what we're going to vote that then? So that's a proposal by. Pat.
That aims seconded by councillor Lewis.
Councillor Lewis. And so all in favour of that motion?
I'm confused what the motion is, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can you put your hands up again? There's a bit of pressure back there. Um, as you see.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so that is, that is unanimous, I think. Yep.
I think we achieved something there.
We've made the decision, but we've made the decision to do something very positive. Right.
Well, please sign off the minutes, but, but please sign off the minutes.
We're only on community development. We haven't gone through the other committees yet, excuse me. And don't seem like I've got a proposal to second up for these minutes to receive them.
Right, okay. Okay, so shall I do, shall I, shall I do that? Just going back, back to stage, um, to actually, uh, receive the, uh, the minutes of the meeting. Um, yeah, but that's not.
You receive them, but you do, you do vote on them, receive them in minutes.
Okay, so it's.
And like I said, the chair and the vice chair, chair proposes the voice, yeah, second.
Okay, um. Okay, uh, I propose then that we accept the draft minutes for the community development committee. Thank you, by councillor Odeley. All in favour, please? Oh, unanimous, yeah. Okay, thank you. Right. Okay, let's move on. Um, economic development and planning. Receive the draft minutes of the Economic Development and Planning Committee, uh, meeting held on tenth of January. Um, any comments, councillor Odeley?
I propose.
Uh, second, councillor Rayby, all in favour, please?
Uh, not on this. Well, yeah, it wasn't, and so I went into here with a phone, so shall I just mention something after?
Uh, yeah, the vote's been taken, so yes.
Um, yeah, the question I was going to ask is about, um. Sort of con- consultation with developers. So developers come forward and they do pre-app consultations with Irish councils. And normally these are done, um, behind closed scenes, uh, closed doors, they're not public meetings. It's normally just a sort of consultation with councillors to, to get a sense of what's going on, really. Um. But I've noticed that here they tend to be done in public. I don't know, I mean, I know in the past when I've come to our HED meetings and those consultations are done publicly. I don't know if the developers, um, how the developers feel about that. I mean, normally they're a bit more open to discussion. When it's not public meetings. And I just wondered if that was something that was. Our experience is normally conducted outside of public meetings elsewhere. I mean, I've certainly found it to be.
It, it depends on the development. These wanted to come to a committee. Um, and I think probably because their plans were quite finalised. Um, in other circumstances where a developer's not quite ready to go public. They might meet with myself and a couple of councillors and my push would be. On the section one oh six and that the community, what you get for, for that, um, and any adjustments that might be made, um, before it goes to planning. Um, but it, it really does depend on the developer. I'm, I'm not a great fan of meeting in secret before it goes public, but there are occasions when it's necessary. But if a developer is happy, and I'll always say this is a public meeting, um, then I, I see no reason why we shouldn't encourage it.
And, and they would know beforehand.
Oh, yes, absolutely. And I wouldn't say a bad.
So. Are you happy that we're doing it the way?
Yes.
Do you know, with the way we've established, we'd do it. Yeah, we did vote on those, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, Finance Administration and Performance Committee, uh. Seating the minutes of, uh, their meeting on the seventeenth of January. Um, which we have, so. Yeah, that's right.
November, seventeenth, January, uh, two lots of minutes.
All right, um.
Seventeenth of January, Finance Admin. The next one.
I'm sorry, please.
Are you trying to get through the agenda?
You.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so nine point three. So, um. Are you, are you, are you proposing now, uh, councillor Rayby? Any questions from anybody? No? Those, uh, second, uh, please propose.
Comment.
Okay.
No, just get who's proposed, I mean, who's seconded it, sorry.
Councillor Rayby.
Councillor Rayby proposed.
Thank you.
Let's see, as it reads for that, accepting those minutes. Thank you, councillor Allford, you. I think unanimous then, thank you. Oh, Jackie. I should have said, does anybody disagree? Um.
If I disagree, you're here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Good. Right, um, chairs of committee meetings, um, to. Chairs of committees meeting to receive that, uh, in draft minutes from that meeting. On the twenty ninth of November and on the seventeenth of January. Um. I'll propose this from the chair. Can I have someone's second acceptance of those? Councillor Rayby, all in favour? Thank you, unanimous. Um, okay, item ten. I think you'll listen to me for this. Um, this is a motion. That follows on from the, uh.
Yeah.
You're right on it.
No.
No, what have I done?
Oh, we start first, didn't we?
Yeah.
So we forget me. I changed the order.
Well, you happy with that?
Yeah, no, sorry.
Um, right, this follows on from the, uh, quite, uh, positive, uh, demonstration. Uh, drop in evening we had here. Quite a few of you attended, uh, Melcham Without. Uh, representatives from Soward Housing and, um, neighbourhood watch and several police. So this was all about rapid deployment CCTV cameras that would run in, uh, that would. Be used in parallel with the core system, uh, through the town. And that core system is being planned by the, uh, um, the CCTV, uh, working group. Um, the deployable cameras are an adjunct to that and sit in very well with the random. Incidents of antisocial behaviour in such, such like over the whole Melcham area. So. The proposal is, um, I guess you have all read every, read every word of it already, but, um. It's to get the, uh, get your agreement to purchase four of these rapidly, uh, deployable cameras. Um, they can be put based for anybody who wasn't there. They can be clamped to a pole. Takes less than half an hour to do. They can run on batteries for up to two weeks. Uh, including night time. They can, they can communicate with, uh, via the phone network. So they're not reliant on any, uh, established, um, communication infrastructure. And the cameras, uh, that have been determined to be the most flexible for what we want. Is a camera that once it's in place, the camera can be moved, not to track anything, but to, to. Make sure it's focused on exactly the area we're concerned with. So it could be a wooded area or it could be a, a housing estate, it could be anywhere. And that would be done in, in line with the standard, with protocols that, uh, Clark's familiar with in terms of, um, um. EDPR and, uh, public safety and so on. So, yes, to get agreement to purchase four of these, um, the background is that, um. Very often, uh, spending the necessary time setting up permanent CCTV is normally, in a lot of cases. Is, is not cost effective and takes a long time. This can effectively go straight to a trouble spot. To establish whether, first of all, whether there is, is the, whether the problem that is felt exists, does exist. Getting evidence to help deal with it. Um, so. We don't have anything like that at the moment. And this would be something that, uh, we know that Melcham Without will do because of the more rural nature of, of their area. Although we share a lot of spots that we've never covered with permanent CCTV. Um, so. The motion is that council agrees to delegate to officers the purchase of four of these cameras. Uh, there's a specification attached to the motion that's also in the pack. Um, the equipment demonstrated and the pricing is from the company IC2. Who, uh, came here and actually put on the demo, but the spec gives officers an opportunity to look at. Costings for, uh, comparable equipment to make sure that we get the, uh, the best deal. Um, it also includes, uh, four batteries. Um, spare batteries, so that if something has to be there, if a camera has to be there for more than two weeks, then we can swap the batteries over. These batteries are expensive because they're lithium batteries, but that's why we get a really good length of time out of it. So the battery's about forty nine hundred pounds each. Um, so it's not cheap, but once they're purchased, that's it. There's a, there's a running cost, uh, per year for the SIM cards to communicate. But apart from that, they're ours to do what we want with. And if a more up to date camera, uh, comes out, then. The camera, if the unit accepts market, cameras that are already established in the market. So a new model camera can be fitted to the unit. So the, the router and all the communication stuff stays, uh, as it is. They've also said that if by the time the, uh, if they receive the order. Um, if there's a, if there's a higher spec camera, at that point, they would include that at no extra cost. So that basically is the motion. Um. I was reading this, I wasn't looking. Um, uh, yes, uh, question?
Yeah, I, I thought the demonstration is very well put on and actually the, um, cameras themselves, I like the idea that you can. Change the camera, um, when looking at the system, um, so the actual cylinder itself. You can change the camera within it, which I know we were worried about on updating the technology. Uh, my only question was, was the pricing. Um, when I spoke to the person doing the demonstration, he told me about two thousand pounds. Per unit. Um, obviously we're asking for four of them and twenty two plus an extra three thousand is quite a jump. So I was wondering if we could have some clarification on, on that.
So he said two thousand?
He said two thousand.
Right. And your query that it's from.
It's that big, obviously, not the movable ones, two grand was for the fixed camera, not the, well, I was on the wall, I thought. I was asking when I was on the TV screen, but, um, yeah, yeah, I can do it at a time, later meeting.
Yeah. Um, I think the confusion is that you've got the cost of the camera.
I think confusion is that you've got the cost of the camera and you've got the cost of battery.
Yes, the cost of the batteries are in addition.
So that's what's confusing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
He hasn't sprung that on us, he was just talking about the, he was actually referring to the camera and the communications unit.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
He said to be grand.
Right, yeah. Yeah, where that cost, where that cost is, yeah. So the next, councillor O'Leary?
Yeah, thank you chair, and thank you yourself, but officers who set up the demonstration, it was really informative and actually the cameras are perfect. Couple of things on here, one is the batteries rechargeable?
Oh yes.
And the second one is to fit a card access into the entrance to the door of compliance. Does that, how many cards would that come with, is that, how would that work? Because obviously in future we get more volunteers and more people wanting access to that room.
It will be, it will be flexible, it will, yeah. Yes, but we need to consider, obviously, we need to look at the whole business of controlled access to a number of sites anyway. So what we'll do is put something in that complies initially, has the flexibility you described. Because we're not talking about a lot of, we wouldn't have a lot of volunteers. I mean, we could be talking about somewhere between what, half a dozen and 20 on rotors and so on. So we're not talking about high numbers. So the insignificant cost in terms of the number of cards you'd need. Yep. That's what Crandall.
This is a very complex fire. The phone system.
Or Wi-Fi, if there's a friendly.
It's cracked these days, I mean, there's a lot of that stuff.
This is encrypted.
It's encrypted. Okay, and again, my, my, we're the second safest place in the county, I just don't understand why you need four.
We want to keep it that way and we've been working on information provided by the police in terms of incidents, the spread of incidents and how effectively this will help do their job. Councillor Fusha?
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for safety. Mustn't it always concern me a little bit, you know, moveable cameras, for one, if we can move them, so can some stealing person, take them away and they can get stolen. The moveable cameras, but the other thing is. I know you're saying hotspots, what hotspots are you talking about? Because the town centre's quite well covered, obviously the skate park, the pavilion. What other areas were you thinking of? Because I, you know, I haven't seen any major problems around the town.
If you think, if you think.
Yeah. You can go, yeah, all the time, and you were wrong about Melcham Without being very. What, what money would they be putting into it?
I'm, I'm talking here about what we as town would do. We will work together with them in terms of CCTV generally, but if they decided they had a requirement for them, then they would have to, they would have to fund them. So they would do that separately.
So they would get their own four cameras saved for what they want.
Whatever they consider. But we would work together on identifying areas and how to deal with them. No, you don't seem convinced.
They're not permanent.
They're not.
No, I know they're not permanent, which was one of my comments about them not being permanent, you know.
Assume they'll be secure. Assume they'll be secure.
At least that we own camera, if you try. Yes, but the other thing is like you're saying about putting them in residential areas, hotspots, I'll be thinking, if I was walking down the road looking at CCTV camera, you know, residential area. Yeah, I think that wouldn't make me feel safer, actually. Sorry.
Well, you need to, we need to maybe look at information on how much support there is from the community. We've got a lot of support there, you're obviously questioning that. Councillor. Councillor.
The batteries. They're £1,400 each, how long will it need to replace?
No, replaceable, replaceable. We've said 10 days, but they, they've. But quality. I think with lithium batteries, it's, it's still, it's a bit like. It's a bit like solar and LEDs with fairly new technology. I'm not sure anybody, I'm not sure many people, well, actually. Councillor Abey knows about this from the vehicle side of things, but basically they can be discharged down to 80% without any damage. And that, that is providing they're charged using, charging circuitry designed for lithium batteries. They last, I mean, we are talking years, can you add anything to that?
Lithium batteries, we expect in the motor industry, a lithium battery, the warrant up to eight years. We actually expect the lifetime to be 14. And that's one of the whole. So.
It's a different battery, it's a different technology, I don't think, to be honest.
Batteries are not cost.
No, I think they're very different batteries there.
It's things on technology and bear in mind.
Lithium batteries are at the same standard as CCTV batteries.
Compared to a car.
Yeah, no, I understand that lithium.
I'm trying to answer your question.
No, 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 I'm just trying to sort of, the point I'm making is we don't know, do we? We don't have the information.
I, I can't, I don't think there's, there isn't an answer I can give you now.
So we pinned that it takes eight years, but this company are guaranteeing them.
Well, I, I can't tell you what their guarantee is, I didn't ask that question, you can find out.
I just, what I can't.
Yeah, 1,400 each, if they last, I don't know, two years, then we need to build that into our budget.
I can tell you, it will be definitely more than two years. These are, I know these are top quality lithium batteries. I can't, I can't give you.
Yeah, can I ask a couple more questions?
Well, if you're quick.
So we don't have a lifespan. Now, obviously, this is over the budget that's been allocated for CCTV. Now, we've already got one down in the skate park, we know the skate park's a hotspot. I remember having a conversation with the police about this and it's responsible, or at least about 5% of the antisocial behaviour was taking place in the skate park. Majority of it is in the town centre. Now, these, we don't have CCTV in the town, do we? So this will cover.
Some in the town.
Well, some in the town, but in the skate park. And this is a top up for cameras to shuffle around the town as and when we choose, based on.
Around the Melcham area.
Yeah, okay, right. Okay, I suppose, I mean, I, I do have some major reservations about putting CCTV cameras on lampposts in residential areas. I think it's stigmatizing for the people who live there. It's going to not make people feel particularly safe if they, and it's also a intrusion of privacy, I think. To have, to have a camera in a residential area, I can see the benefit within the town and in the park, but had it say Windsor Avenue. It's, I'm quite uncomfortable with that personally. Secondly, to keep this within budget, why not we move to a, buy one camera this year and then simply one camera next and one camera the year after? We can have a sort of a program so we stay within our budget and just pick up extra cameras. And then finally, are we getting regular? I mean, I've seen a few police reports that come my way, but if the police were to identify specific locations where there is trouble, then I would feel more comfortable buying cameras if we knew where they are. But I mean, at the moment, we just seem to have chosen four cameras, but I'm not convinced, I'm certainly not seeing the evidence that says that we require four cameras in addition to the ones we've already got, I mean, maybe two sufficient. Why, why four?
Right, let's just go back to the basic question of putting cameras in residential areas. When you deploy CCTV, you've got to, you've got to document the purpose of that camera being there. And we wouldn't expect to put a camera just because we decided it would be interesting to put it there. It would be there in response to what had been identified as a problem that CCTV could possibly help resolve. So that's, that's the first thing, it would be done in a controlled way, complying with protocols through, in place. If it was decided that there was, that CCTV could, that there was a good chance it could provide the evidence needed to establish the perpetrators, then, yes. Well, we would, we would, you're not happy that we would work with the police to. Shall we, let's ask, if I can just go and ask, does anybody, do you have a comment relating on to what could be a problem there, a problem there is?
Question regarding something that Carl might you might live in to yourself.
Let me go to one of you.
Primrose Drive area and the drug use around that, something that come out of that meeting, which was, you know, quite a large number of residents. I think there was something like 12 plus residents, if I remember rightly. And they sort of outlined actually CCTV would actually help a lot of their problems with identifying crime, picking out the car edges, picking out what would need and might, and, you know, the police even said, yeah, it would help tackle the issues faster. So in those instances where you know crime is happening, but it's not hotspot for crime because they're not being reported effectively.
Yeah, so the camera could go there. Where do we need four?
Give us the flexibility, councillor.
It's a good idea to have four because you're, you're going to be like chasing a rat really, they're, they're going to go where they're not going to be a camera. Yeah, that's why they forced that, the jail areas into the Murray Walk areas, into the Primrose Drive, into the Metro Nuthy, they're what's happened. I had somebody come up to me today, and this is quite a common thing, that they're saying, do you know there's people drug dealing in this area? I won't mention that area, but it's an area we all fight quite often. And it's four o'clock in the afternoon, it's seven, they're regularly there every week. Well, if we can highlight that to, you know, to the, to the police and that, they can put a camera there and, you know, hopefully we're going to get them. We haven't got much crime, but we've got too much. I think we want to, you know, my aim is to have zero antisocial behaviour. Yeah, you know, you, you need to get a grip on this really.
Police and the beat would do the same thing and it would invade our privacy.
This is unlike principle of these speed indicator devices.
I, I feel there's about 20,000 residents in Melcham and there might be 20 antisocial behaviour people that are really causing problems. We've got to deal with them, you know, not just say, oh, we accept it, there's nothing we can do. This is something we can do, I think we're to welcome.
Graham, did you?
It's just, just a question, the batteries, how long do they take to recharge? I mean, it's starting to happen now. I'm giving up talking about batteries. Sorry, I'm giving up talking about batteries. If I'm asking a question here, we're looking at a camera for £2,000, does two batteries, do you have any? If we've got four of those left, does it take us long to recharge the battery as it actually sits there in situ? If we've got four, I'd say before we recharge the battery, why do we need all those batteries?
To give us the continuity, just like we do with the speed indicator devices.
But we, we, we actually might let us save the day. And then we're going to perform, we're considering the job just basically. Basically, we've got six grand in inventory of batteries sitting there charged, ready to go, but that won't be needed for seven days, that won't be needed for seven days, that won't be needed for four days.
Right, that's going to add to administration. Right, okay.
I just want to answer Graham's point, I think he's got a very good point really, because if you've only got two, if you've only got one, you know, CCTV, then you want two batteries. So it's sort of like on the scale, if you've got two or three, then you might only, you know, one or two, like I would say four, then two batteries would be enough.
Two spare batteries. Okay.
It's all reasonable, I think.
It's not exactly the same thing as everybody does with trains, we're like, I'm sorry about that, you know, you've got one special, you've got ten and you just have one, two spare.
Thank you.
Just wanted to put another side on it with the award. It wasn't, it wasn't so much that there actually was a problem. It was that the residents felt there was a problem there, felt they weren't having enough help from the police. And I think we actually wasted a lot of police time and so James got a lot of flack for it. It wasn't so nice for him either. And I think maybe if we had something like this, we don't have to just put it in a spot where we know crime is. Maybe at that time, we could have probably said, right, we can get this in here, leave it for you for a month. And I just think that would have put all their minds at rest and that's how I feel, I might, it can be positive.
There've been a lot of instances that I've experienced with Sowet House where cameras have helped to establish the truth of things and not. And it's established that there was wrong and unreliable information that's come out. And there was a situation down at the adventure centre where it actually identified that someone that had stopped someone assaulting somebody but was being accused, the CCTV proved that he actually wasn't, he was actually restraining someone who was assaulting another person. So yes, there are all sorts of issues, they've also been used for flight tipping, they've also been used to sort out some serious school parking issues as well. So there are all sorts of things that they can be useful.
Gary's had his hand up for mine, so sorry.
Councillor, first?
Yeah, I, I, my thoughts for firstly is overkill, that's, we don't need five at the moment. But on, on Louise's point with regard to the police, I was at this meeting with the residents and the councillors, etc. The police were informed about the incidents on this, but lost most of the information. So I, I think, again, it's not something that's part of the CCTV, but if we are going to vote for something that's actually is still, is still likely not to get any convictions or anything like that because of the police are overstretched. It's just, it seems to be a waste, a waste of our money.
My comments on that would be that I am absolutely certain that if the evidence is of sufficient quality, the police will respond to it. We've had them do that to what we've got at the moment. If it becomes routine and the quality well managed, they will respond. Councillor Crandall?
Yeah, I've got two sort of areas of concern that perhaps you could help alleviate. The first is what is the decision-making process for the areas that these cameras need to be deployed? Is it, does it lie within the town council?
It would be police and the working.
There wouldn't be a working group, there would be a proper protocol set up, there are set procedures even for a deployable camera. You can't just go and stick it on a column, there has to be some evidence that you need it.
So A, there's a democratic mandate concerns me and B, as a councillor, I would be quite concerned about it in residential areas. So for example, in our ward, in Rose Nature Reserve, is an obvious place to put them. But certainly I wouldn't want one, I wouldn't want a local government CCTV camera outside my own house. And I wouldn't want to sanction that outside one of my residents' houses without overwhelming support of the community.
Yeah, the procedure is laid down, I've got, called it all here, it's very laborious. But there are lots of hoops that you have to jump through and I have to be the data controller, so I will be all over installations and.
Base for that decision-making.
The sign-ups on the protocol would be approved by the council.
So we approve a framework, but then that framework is applied.
By your senior officer, in conjunction with the police.
Okay, um, secondly, my second area, which is relates to questioning that I've had, um, in our budgetary conversations. Um, which we've only allocated ten thousand pounds for CCTV at the moment with the knowledge that that is not going to be the full cost to satisfy the programme, uh, and that would likely cover the cost of the control group. We, we've asked a couple of times for an estimation of a total cost of the programme. I know in our preliminary discussions, when we were discussing option three, we put a figure, a ballpark figure of seventy-five thousand on the CCTV programme. Um, but are we yet any further with a master plan of what equipment we want? And how much of it we want?
Not, uh, an overall plan yet. It seemed an obvious decision to go down the deployable camera route in parallel with developing the town system. Because it shows that we are doing something about CCTV and we are addressing places other than purely the town centre. Um, you mentioned, uh, in, in streets, there are lots of instances where especially, um, you know, you've only got to talk to the, uh, to housing associations like Sowland. And they get instances where the CCTV in a residential situation, it does give a lot of confidence and feeling of safety. So I think to discount that is, um, a little bit, uh, a little bit short sighted.
How is it users would be discrimination?
I'm not talking about, not talking about targeting anything, just the fact that when there's a residential, when there's a problem in a residential area, CCTV has been proven to be a very acceptable way of dealing with.
Five, five seconds and I'll shut up for the rest of this. I, I would prefer to be presented with a master plan and then budget for you as a working group. The, the cost to satisfy that plan and then task you with getting on with it rather than a piecemeal programme to the council. Because you, you've got a lot of knowledge in this. There is a dedicated group. And I, if I'm voting to use the, the pre-separatory reserves, I would sooner be funding an overall programme for the town with sort of set objectives to achieve.
Councillor Mortimer. Oh, no, 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 councillor Aides first.
Um, I sense that there's a general consensus that we do need something, but um, I think if I did this now, four is probably, or four at this moment is probably more than we need. So I'd like to propose, just to move things along, that, that means, um, buy one or two and spare battery. And yes, it would fall part of a final plan. But with summer coming and there's always a few incidents in the summer, especially during the holidays, I think you ought to be prepared. And, um, and I, and that's what I'd like to propose. So we actually do something, you know, we do do something. We can always buy another one next year and if, or not buy any more at all if they prove not to be needed. But I'd like to do some of them. So I think one or two cameras and base their battery.
Right.
So.
Okay, let's just, let's just hear councillor.
I think you are in denial on how much drug use there is in Melton. I spoke with the housing officer at the demonstration and she was very, very pleased with what Colin was doing. She said Queensway is right with it, the forest is right with it, let's get rid of it. Colin's got the answer to do it. In the option four, I realised that CCTV might cost about fifty thousand. And I suggested that it, that it came out there, marked reserves for the, for the sole money.
Right, thank you. Um, I think a clerk is, let's say something.
Yeah, um, I just want to give you the benefit of my experience really with CCTV. As I've, um, installed and managed quite sophisticated system for the town council, similar demographics to here. Um, it's the thing with the CCTV system and camera system, it's more about reducing the fear of crime. It's not about catching people. Um, I think I can count on one hand how many drug dealers they got because the police can't see if they're drugs from the camera. Um, I think, uh, so the fee, reducing the fear of crime, I think should be the number one, and education. That the best way to manage a CCTV system is to actually have volunteer um, controllers who are actually monitoring the cameras. So you're being proactive. Reactive is, um, it doesn't always work whilst it might identify someone in court. Somebody say, yeah, they were guilty, you've called them on camera. If you're proactive and you have a police radio, you can in tandem follow whatever's going on and, um, be liaising with the police and that works. Or better still, um, I know instances where people have actually, um, been given help because the right services have been called when someone's been found to be in distress. So it's not about putting cameras in places where you think there's going to be trouble. There will be hotspots and at times if you liaise with the police, you can actually put up a, 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 um, deployable camera that will be there for a couple of weeks, but you still have to go through the advertising that there's going to be surveillance. And, and get all the protocols in place and the permissions and where it's situated and how it, how it moves, uh, and where it can see its line of vision. All has to be very careful. Um, so for, I think, until we know exactly where we want to put our cameras and we have got some kind of plan for the whole of the town, um, I, I didn't quite understand getting a deployable camera to work out whether or not we need a permanent one was always a cost-effective way of doing it because I didn't, I'd not done it that way, but that's, I'm not saying that that's wrong. But yeah, I, I think we, we need to, as a council probably needs to decide whether it wants to reduce the fear of crime or whether this is just about catching people and stopping drug dealing and you know, there's a myriad of things that cameras can support the council with. And a deployable camera used at events or on evenings where you've got Halloween, you know, where there, there could be, you know, sort of like more people within the town. And, uh, that problems could, uh, arise. But, but that's just the benefit of the experience. I'm not saying that's going to work in Melton, but you, it can work at this level, but you know, the hoops that you have to jump through, the protocols are very, very strict and everything has to be registered. So I, I understand that aspect of it.
Right, um, I think councillor.
Back to motion with two cameras, a battery, and then we can top up. Once we've done the, the work and ascertain what you want. Okay.
Right, councillor.
One question I was going to have was, um, obviously we've got quite a lot of support from the police. Um, were, were they not willing to put any money towards it or fund it in any way? But they really, but they really supported it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
I think what, once, it could be that once it starts moving and people can see things happening, there will be interest in support from them and we can look for support and sponsorship as well. It's getting it started and getting people to see that we're doing something. Um, councillor Mortimer first?
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Um, option three has seventy-five thousand pounds in their budget for CCTV. And I think that just shows how important this is and we do need it. Um, where you've got people monitoring it, they will be catching the drug dealers because the whole point of it, they'll be monitoring it. They'll be sending out a radio message to the police. I think that's how it works in there. You'll be contacting the police, the people that are monitoring it. They'll be catching you. You know, this is what we've got to do.
Um, I think.
You've ever done that in first, yeah.
Just, just to speak, to speak to councillor Mortimer's point, if, if, now I agree with the town clerk that the utility of these is really only to make people feel safer. And actually, if we as a council are going to try and go after teenagers stealing wheat, then, you know, we're we're completely omitting the sort of middle-class drug dealing. We're only looking at one socioeconomic demographic. And, and actually marijuana drug dealing is antisocial behaviour and, and needs to be moved on, but I think it's rather short sighted to just be saying it's, it's the chaps in hoodies we should be skewing because they look smart. And actually the, the array of middle-class drug, drug use is just to be able to look just because they don't deal it on the streets. Um, but, but I finally just to say that I, I know and trust Linda because I work with her. But to knock on one of my residents' doors and say that I've given authority for the town clerk to work with the police to decide where we put a camera. I would sooner we have, you know, a, a plan and, and a robust decision-making process where we can legitimately go to our residents and say, this is the mechanism where you can say we think there is antisocial behaviour here or walking down this path, I don't feel safe. And I want a CCTV camera there. And I, as a councillor, want some channel that I can, I can go through to say this is an area where people feel vulnerable. How do we go about getting a camera there? But to vote for it, just to say that we delegate all these powers to the clerk and the police. Yeah, I, I can't go to residents and say, trust me, Linda's lovely, she will act in your interests. I mean, we know that, but the people of Melton don't.
Thanks for that comment. I, I think you'll find that, you know, in the majority of cases, where a camera is, where it's decided to put a camera in, the majority of people in that area would be aware of what's going on and be supportive of it. But I, I take the point, you've made the point very clearly that, um.
I think we've got to reach out to our residents and let them know we've got this. We, we, they are our ears and eyes. We've got to listen to them. I have people telling me every day there's drug dealing going on. We've got to get it. So these are reported, but we can act on it. It, it's not, it's not just a question of weed. I mean, there was cocaine and goodness knows what fang outside, um, in the little bar. Yeah, it's not, and you know, it is serious.
I walk around, I can smell it. But the point is going after chaps who think it looks smart.
Can we bring the store closed?
Excuse me.
Councillor.
Thank you. Um, yeah, can we both remind my colleagues to go for the chair? Um, so I, I, I've, I think it's a brilliant idea. I'm going to go with Sue's suggestion, but I would suggest having two um, uh, batteries as well as two cameras. Um, I just feel like if, if they're in, if, if we deploy the cameras in two separate locations and both batteries go down at one time. And spare one. Um, I'm not going to sit and, and sit here and say what I think's going on in the town, what these cameras should be for. Um, but, um, what I would hope is that actually if we go out to residents and say, look, we noticed that there is an issue in your area, that actually the resident, I mean, I certainly would as a resident in Melton, would like to think, actually, okay, the town council is saying proactive there, so please, let's put it up and, and, and hope that whatever it is gets, gets caught on CCTV. And so I agree with Sue's suggestion. Pat, sorry.
Let's take this to a vote, I think, because we do have a motion here. So if, if a motion is modified so that it addresses two cameras with their batteries plus one spare battery. So if we take that as a motion proposed by.
We just add that it's taken out of earmarked reserves.
It will come out of the next year. You've got this two and a half in this year because I worked out sixty-four and a half allocated for CCTV. You've got two and a half this year, ten thousand actually in the budget and then fifty from the earmarked reserve next year.
So if we make a, a start, if this gets us at least started, I think that's, and so seconded.
No, I think, um, Pat suggested it and, and Phil seconded it.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Can I, can I just add on to the proposal that a proper framework is also put into place as well?
Absolutely.
Yes, you have to by law. You can't not.
Absolutely. That, that, that is crucial and Linda's, uh, a clerk's going to guide us in terms of that over the whole CCTV issue.
To make sure it went with oversaw.
Yes, I think, uh, that might even be. I think that's, that's in the wording as well because, um, that was added. But we naturally, the appropriate protocols are. As long, okay, uh, so long as T, CCTV protocols are in place and operators understand these protocols, operators and volunteers to be pleased to check. Yep.
So before we do that on that, can we also ask the, um, the clerk on the costs? Let's come back on costs because the mortgage has got quite only twenty-two to forty-eighty.
That's for the four year.
Yeah, but if we drop down to two and one battery, we need to say, because it's not necessarily just going to sort of slowly juice by half, is it? I don't know if they, they quote us based on the Jitsport. So we, we need a new quote. But that, don't we? And we need to agree that expenditure because they might come back and we decide, well, actually they dropped it by three thousand to twenty-eighty. So I, 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 I wish we agreed, or, or I was, yes, we agree or we go on a motion, but then afterwards the clerk has to go and get another quote and then come back with us, come back to.
Oh, yeah, three more quotes, whatever. If you decide to buy one or four, I'll be going for three more quotes.
Okay.
To agree.
Right.
So that's coming back to council to agree.
Back to full council. Uh, we, I, I'd like to think we could come up with something that didn't delay it. Um, I mean, a, a simple thing would be, I suppose, would be if they agree, if they agreed to supply on a pro rata basis.
That wouldn't get a problem, no, but it's, then on break that would be, so I think. I mean, if, if he comes back and goes, I don't know, nineteen thousand pounds or something like that. Two cameras and three batteries.
If, if, could we not agree that if it wasn't, if it didn't work out pro rata, that was acceptable? Any variation on that has to come back?
Yeah, pro rata would be. So that's six thousand, so for, what, nearly ten thousand then. Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy.
I don't know if it will be pro rata because I think he was talking about special deal because we haven't had that many. One thing that hasn't been. Able to hire these out in Melton without my one and so on. He was talking about it.
I would advise against that. It's full of complications because we're a public authority, the housing association aren't. Um, and I'm not being responsible for their data and whatever they share with other people.
Yeah, so we'd, we'd have to, we'd have to consider that after we've decided on a, on a. Approach. If we then find we can do other things, I think we've got to maybe look at that as a bonus, not as part of the plan. So we do have a motion then, which is the reduced quantity. If we can get them to stick to the same price, uh, then we go ahead getting, seeking quotes against that. If that changes significantly, if it changes, uh, then, um, we have to do it on whatever slightly higher prices. Is obvious. Yep. Does that make, yeah, you.
Well, it's an excellent house. It's going to be a month, isn't it? So by the time you, you've got some quotes in.
Almost longer. I think it's two months.
You see, we're, we're, we're showing, you know, people will see evidence from the skate park coverage, evidence of King George V coverage. Um, I, I, I was, I think it wouldn't be too long before we can have at least something to address the more, um, less obvious issues, but it's down to you. The more um less obvious issues, but it's down to you.
And using its work, talking to Melcham without it, because I'm sure that the reduction is the same. I mean, then we could. You know, if they want some as well, we might be able to get them for what they want to. I mean, we could recharge the budget setting tonight. A budget setting tonight.
Well, we could always, we could always uh, we could always mentor.
I was just gonna say, if it's um, if it's in the budget already, um does this have to go back to four counts or can it just go to a definite term?
And the budget for the rest of this year is about two thousand four hundred, then next year you've got ten sixty, yeah, so. That the committee with responsibility could make the decision. Like, because it's been fully debated tonight, I'd feel more comfortable as an officer knowing exactly what council wants to do.
I just think that's very good. Yeah.
I've not heard two people at once.
If you came back in the next full council just to sign off a quote, it would give you time to discuss with Melcham without if they wanted to um co-purchase.
We don't want it dependent on that, do we?
It's only a couple of months, it gives them the option.
You you're happy to lay to delay it a couple of months, yeah?
I mean, I mean, logically, it might be to delegate going ahead on two miles of four. By the price that it's in fifty five percent of the current pool. Which gives you a a lay and a definite figure there. And that's a, if it goes to the point of yikes, it's um, you know, this, you know, council Alford's nineteen versus twenty two thousand, that's absurd, we won't. But if it's a bit over, then that's we will.
We're fine tuning the motion, yeah.
We've already got the money in the budget for it. I just I do have going to the. Um you know, the next, that that can affect the funding, they're supposed to generate, I think it's a good idea, yeah.
Can somebody, I'm really struggling, so that's why I'm, so.
But so on, let's summarize it. So what was the, what was the proposal that you said, Pat?
Two cameras with batteries plus a spare battery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then with Graham's added.
And I I was on the, uh, let's just go ahead with it, providing it doesn't come in at the same sixty percent of the cost.
And then delegate all the property, yeah, and then, there, are you happy with that?
Sorry, so we are just one person at a time, because the officers, I'm struggling to get your motion and I want to make sure.
We've heard what council has said.
Pat's happy with that, I'm happy with that amendment, and I'm quite happy with the motion, as it is.
Fifty five percent.
Percent or.
Do you back?
And 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 the. And the control room part of it stays because that's to make the most of the quality of the.
Okay, it's a false screen, but, yeah, yeah.
I think we need a regulation for that. The match was clarified what the fifty five percent is. Is it fifty five percent of the total cost that we put up per side?
No, it's. The thirty two thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the control room, all the rest of the page, that's the same.
Yeah.
No, you misunderstand me. Um. We're having two, two and three, aren't we? Two, two cameras and three cameras. So you're saying that that's fifty five percent of the total cost of what we're gonna spend.
Basically, it was four plus four.
Yeah.
And we're going for two plus three.
No, it's four plus eight.
No, it was four plus eight, you forgot. So it was four plus eight, it's been smaller, it's been four plus eight. And we're going for two plus three.
Yeah.
No, it should be well.
It should be, it should be, it should be, it should be well. All I'm doing is putting in a safety net there. If um council office is only covering boxes of five. And um, actually, you could, actually, you could have got a fifth at the same price.
Four remaining. Minus six pounds, country eight batteries. So that's twelve.
Four, yeah, twelve, so minus twelve.
If it's pro rata. Divided then by, so that's ten thousand four hundred eighty for four cameras divided by four. Times by two, so the cameras, if they were on the same deal, the cameras standalone would be five thousand two hundred forty. What pro rata on top of that, five two forty and the fifteen hundred per battery? Are you looking? So five two forty plus. Where we're trying to get to in terms of fifty five percent of twenty two thousand.
Even me.
I think we, I think we can.
That people are watching it and they can't hear it.
Please, yes, we do need to be aware that, you know, people watching this and trying to follow it might be just finding it a little tricky. Um so can you make, can you come through the chair first? That first point, uh, councillor.
I think the whole point is, if we're buying four, it's gonna be cheaper than if we're buying one. We can't just buy four, just buy one and say that's what they pay for.
Well, you've got to work out that in terms of percentage on top of that bigger to, because the thing is, the back, I bet the batteries are pretty much the same price. Regardless of the amount you buy it, given units, cameras, that the big deal will have been done on. Here, I'm looking at my four cameras, that's where my profit margin is. So. Fifty five percent is gonna be twelve, three, six, four.
They've given us a five percent discount, um. They gave us that five percent discount. Now that was based on the figures we talked about, so it depends. Depends whether that was. Yes, okay. Uh I think we need to go further than that. So are we, are we happy now that we've arrived at something we can support?
Can we just go back over all that, those guys?
Right. Yeah. Can we, so before. Motion is then that we purchase three, uh, two cameras, three batteries.
At no more than fifty.
At no more than fifty five percent.
Of the quote.
Of the quote of the camera element. In the quotation.
Of the quote from actually naming the contractor and things.
Yes, I could that. And we'll leave the, we we leave that the cost for the control room, uh, as it is.
So that was proposed by councillor A, seconded by councillor Alford.
Yep, yeah, proposed by councillor Alford.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, can we? Yeah, can we take this to the vote, please? Right, all those in favor?
Just showing those members present in voting, so. No, not yet. Well, yeah, but any.
Have any against, please? Thank you. I think at some stage we all need to have a meeting with the police and all agree as a council how to approach these uh. Problems, but do that as a completely separate exercise. Move on, moving on. Uh, right, councillor Alford, your motion.
So uh, the motion is to work with the council, um. As part of a place called alongside external consultants, local stakeholders, master plan and Melcham. And and now that was written back in November, um. Decision has been taken, you know, to to run the place well, but also to look at the, take, take sort of the publicly held assets. Library blue out of that, oh, partly, like, and look at them separately, so. It's also to review publicly owned assets as part of a wider plan to enhance regeneration. So it's co-working between Melcham and Wiltshire Council on um the future of those sites. Now, the plan is to bring in um consultants who can help guide that process. And uh work with uh both town and Wiltshire Council to um come to an outcome. On those sites, what best possible usage for them is, and what works best for the town. Eventually, so um the the outcome, of course, will really come down to those exploratory discussions. And um the idea is three members of the town council would be uh going on to join the task group. And to explore options. We need to to just pay the right, probably. I'm happy to answer questions, none.
You saying here um to engage uh with Wiltshire Council. Um so we we'd be looking for some representative, for substantial representation from this council, yes?
Uh, yeah, so after this, I think there is a, um, I think it's Alford's one, generous. Answers to join the task group, to work with Wiltshire Council and basically just look at these sites and decide, uh, you know. Perhaps if there's, uh, what what might be a better future for sites? What what could be done and then to consider um assets that Melcham have got as well. To see if there's some uh co-working on if it'll be done to improve them.
And after, I I've been liaising with the Wiltshire Council.
Okay.
Uh, well, the action is to uh ask if the council agreed to do the co-working exercise. And to then um choose three task group members to work with Wiltshire Council. That's me, I think it's pencilled in tomorrow at Wiltshire Parliament.
So that would be, so the the three uh, three councils, three members involved. Is that actually stated in the in the motion or?
Um, that follows up, yes, the meeting itself, it doesn't say three councillors. That, I mean, this motion was was written back in November, so that's something that's um, that's come out subsequently.
Well, I would, I would think we need at least, I would think we'd need at least three, wouldn't we?
Uh, yeah, you need to pass group, so if you get too many people, it comes over. And um in light of the assets, and these were bearing in mind, I mean, collectively between us, of course, we've got the library site. Um, we have the Blue Pool, which money has been allocated to demolish the Blue Books. Where once the pool moves across the campus, the building will still attract business rates. So that would be a revenue drain and has no alternative purpose, so the intention of budget is to to knock that site down. So there may be an opportunity, and of course, like we say, similar thing with the library. There may be an opportunity for us as a town to say, well, okay, we own the assembly hall. Wiltshire Council have got some other sites, is there something we can do collectively to maybe look at a way to improve that facility? Or to change the facility or to enhance it? So it's really about opening exploratory talks. To see what works for everyone.
Um, so uh councillor Holden?
With the, I completely agree, I agree that the town get involved with this, talk to Wiltshire. Um, do Wilt- Wiltshire already talking about those empty buildings? Does that mean they have a basic idea or or a basic startup idea? Of what they're gonna do with those buildings? Because it sounds like there's already ideas floating about and what they look like, what's been discussed so far.
Um, I mean, yeah, I think probably looking at the two sites, people are gonna speculate. But that's why this proposal i- involves bringing in some consultants to work with. Towns, with Wiltshire Council and want to ascertain um the best use really. Most appropriate use for for what we all want to achieve. So at the moment, there is no, no decisions made, no. Yeah, with love of anything, yeah. I think whatever it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be fairly commercially viable. I mean, I don't think it would be. I I don't think it'd be constructed to start land in in museums and so on. Or not necessarily museums, it's probably a bad example, but, you know, I I I think whatever comes out, yeah, it has to be commercially viable. Because if if it's gonna be developed, building's gonna be built, then there's costs associated with that, so um. But that, but again, it's all something that come after discussions.
Just a question around the assembly hall, Phil, because um, not assembly hall, sorry, Melcham House. Is what, I'm a little bit confused, because you referred to before, and here it's referred to as a community space. You referred to before potentially about outside parties potentially taking it over. So. Is it gonna be a community space for the community or is an outsider gonna take it over and change it into something else? Because I'd be very concerned to see us try to convert Melcham House into the assembly hall. But then Wiltshire change their minds at the last minute and go, oh, actually, that business is interested in having Melcham House. And then we're suddenly in a position whereby we don't have our own. Then you, I'm just not sure what Wiltshire.
Yeah, so, no, I think, I I I can see where you're going with that. We, no, would be it really? I don't think you would have to worry about Wiltshire Council changing its mind. If discussions went along the line of, would Melcham Town be interested in taking on that asset? Then that would be something that, um, if if that was to progress and come out in discussions, someone would be interested. And you, you know, you could look at entries, you know, agreements with that pr- pretty quickly. Or or at least not, um, in such a way that they wouldn't just be broken. I mean, Wiltshire Council wouldn't say, yeah, okay, let's have an agreement. Sign on the right line and then pull out at the last minute. That that, that's not where they operate.
So is Melcham House not going to become a commercial operation? I, it's not going to sound like it's used it to a third party that's outside of us or outside of Wiltshire.
It's the nature of the third parties. It's got to be, the usage within planning terms has to be as a uh community facility. So if a an organisation wants to come along, um, I don't know, enhanced foundation, for example. And look to rent at least the whole building and then to use it as a public space. They would be a third party, um, they are not council, but that, as I understand it, would be fine in planning terms.
Right, can I just, can I, can I interrupt you? Because I think we've got to watch that we don't get into the discussions that will actually take place.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, these are all things that come out of discussions.
Yes, I I so unless anybody else has got something more general about the motion. Can we put the individual issues to one side, but take those up as part of the process? Once the motion's hopefully carried. So, yes, I've got to, uh, I think councillor A and then councillor. Okay.
Right, with that in mind, and to begin to.
But something I want to ask. This stage, what are the financial implications, if any, to us? I think we should know that before we go.
There aren't any. I mean, there is a um consultant that'll be um used. But that is mainly costed by. Obviously, if the, you know, the capital generated at the end of the the project. I mean, if the town wants to come in and work with Wiltshire Council and then look to, I don't know, pick up the sites almost, and just do something, then. There there will possibly be discussions on chat. Process. Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. I thought I'd.
Uh, right, so I had two questions. One was the financial side of things, which I think you just answered, but the second one is. We keep referring to as sites, but um can you just clarify what sites are we actually on here? Is it the library and the blue?
The blue pool, the library, and the, um, obviously, there's the car park there, but then. The the parking would be retained, although maybe we want it, that there wouldn't be any appetite to get rid of parking. Um, but there's also, if you're aware, there's a building behind the library.
Sorry, can I interrupt again? Um, this again is detailed, could this, this could actually be established, couldn't it, as part of?
No, because it says sites and just want to clarify what.
You actually want that specifically, okay?
Because we don't know what sites you.
Yeah, libraries, essentially not library site, the blue site, but then. But then there's going to be a meeting tomorrow about that, then, you know, we'll have some discussions, sites that are in.
Right, you're happy, well, Carl's, yeah, councillor, then and then councillor Ellis.
Are you going to have in terms of what's going on? I know we're representing, that rep, I can't say a word, representing, you know what I mean? How much actual sale are we going to have? Or is it going to be like when we went to sort of Melcham House consultation and we sort of said our piece? And then it was sort of drafted up anyway, because are we going to have a lot of information? Like, do you know what I mean?
Well, on Melcham House, for example, the town, yeah, was asked for their views, but of course, they don't own the building. So I mean, you can ask for views and then not agree proceeding. That doesn't have to change what you do. The the level of influence can come down to what the town puts into the pot, really. I mean, if the town were to say, for example, okay, you know, how about we we pick up a site and replace the Assembly Hall for example? A new replacement facility on the library side. Well, then, you know, the town's got skin in the game and it has a lot of influence over what happens. If the town, the council were not interested in in doing anything like that. Didn't want to work over the future of Melcham House perhaps, and, you know, then obviously that influence over decisions become lessons, I suppose. But again, it really comes down to discussions and the whole point of having a consultant is to take the sting out of it. So it doesn't feel like one council behaving in one way and another one, you know, it's about bringing people together to agree a viable outcome. To enhance what's there.
You have the.
So it is actually that class going into the end, basically.
Oh, yeah, 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 fantastic.
That's a lot of value in it.
That sounds, he's right, you, you're happy, that sounds a reason. Yep. Right. Councillor Ellis.
Information, I actually started with the Shadow Campus Operations Board way, way, way back when we're talking about these things here. And we were looking at Wiltshire Council's eight properties within the Melcham area to be looked at and to be done, dealt with. And there was thoughts at that point, there were no definite plans for what to do with each of them. In reference to the chair, I won't actually talk about what all the thoughts were for all the eight here. I heard that thing. But it is very much worthwhile arguing and getting involved. Even if we find that the town council has little financial input, well, i.e. little financial weight into that. If we can say, Wiltshire Council, this is what we prefer rather than something else. Chances are they will listen to us and tend to drift in that direction unless we really put them off.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to say, really, it's useful if we had a list of all Wiltshire Council assets that were in Melcham and all Melcham assets. You know, I don't know if everybody knows what the assets are for everyone.
But what strategic assets like, or, I mean, to be honest with you, in terms of buildings, that's pretty much it. Other than the campuses, you know, obviously there's car parks and highways and so on. And then there's some depots and some other bits and bobs about here. Are you thinking specifically buildings in the town?
Buildings, yeah, you can have any.
Yeah, like Blue Port, Camphlet.
Yeah, Wiltshire Council.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and town council, but I mean, it's the Assembly Hall, Town Hall, right? And Foylins.
Well, this, this, this is something that we.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If you go back in history, Wiltshire Council owned, oh, I thought it's kind of clever, worse, have had the Blue Pool and the Assembly Hall. When the Assembly Hall was sold to Melcham, I think it's about 2001. Half of the Blue Pool stuff is in the Assembly Hall, all the water tanks, you cannot take the Blue Pool down without the Assembly Hall.
You can take it down without diminishing.
We need to appoint three members.
I've got to interrupt because we are now going into what definitely needs dealing with. But as part of the, of what's being proposed, I think. So we need the schools, three people to do this. Hang on a second, hang on a second, hang on a minute.
It's the motion, sir.
Right. Okay, we're on the basis that we'll be appointing three people. The motion is obviously proposed by councillor Holford, second bid by. All in favour. That is unanimous, unless I'm mistaken. Okay. Okay, three people, could we have some expression of interest? So councillor, okay. Right, well then, we've, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six hands up. Obviously, we can't. We can't have six, six too many, isn't it?
I've, I've got two dates from Louise, I've got a letter later tonight so that they can be prepared. And it's tomorrow, so the 25th tomorrow at five, it'll be via Teams or next Monday at 4:30, but that'll be via Teams as well. Yeah.
My hand up too, but I think we've got.
So out of everyone that's put themselves forward, which day they're all available for?
Okay, so.
Well, Wiltshire has asked for three, I don't know, Phil.
How would, how would you use this, us dealing with this then? So if we've got six, if we've got six.
I felt it would be helpful if there was sort of broad coverage in terms of, or at least every.
For the council to be representative of the lives of all, yes.
Representation across the various, I know we're not a political council, but, or a good representation across the council. So everyone felt as if they, their views.
So is that three minimum? Yeah, okay, so we do need to whittle it down to three people.
Is it worth putting up the date to see those people?
Well, yeah, okay, tomorrow or the 31st first.
And so we'll leave in the title.
So councillor Aids can do 31st, councillor Ellis can do 31st.
Jack can do 31st.
The councillor, 31st. Any, who, who else?
You can't say the same then. Claire?
I said, is there more eager than I am than are leaving to it because they seem very eager?
Yeah. How do you, Gary, how do you feel?
No, I've got lots on my plate, that's mine.
Right, just a minute, I've got. Pat, Carl, Simon and Graham can all do both, and Jack can just do next Monday.
Yeah, of course, if it needs to be, if that's the season. Yeah.
So I've got one, we've got four now.
We have one in reserve.
I was going to, yeah, so that we always have three at all the meetings.
Who's going to be the reserve? Because I, if you can all make tomorrow, I'm going to, I think we're plump for tomorrow at five.
Well, I don't mind being a reserve because I, I will be pushing it tomorrow, so.
Thank you so much. So can we have a resolution that councillor Ames, councillor Crandall and councillor Ellis are appointed to the task group? And they will be attending the meeting tomorrow at 5pm, 25th of January.
Yep, is everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Mortimer. Right, could we have a show of hands on that, please? Unanimous. Item 12, it's not, that, that's, that's pulled from this agenda. Item 13, calendar of meetings, you'll probably see there's a calendar for the next, the coming year. Any comments on that, councillor?
As I noticed, the annual term things, I didn't come down, it may have switched around from what's on the previous calendar.
No, item 12 has been pulled off. Yeah, sorry, I.
So we have the annual meeting on the ninth and Ecom Day on the 16th. Because I've got such a different calendars. As I'm on both, doesn't really matter.
Right. It does need to be sorted or agreed.
Well, yes, which way that?
It does, in the agenda.
So it is the annual meeting on the ninth, right, and the Ecom Day on the 16th.
Yes.
Everybody, where was it published from?
It's been on the town, on the council website. It's probably been on, we made it to the end of last week.
It's time to set them from May onwards.
This is in the May onwards, and I think there've been some, a couple of early stats of last year.
Yeah. And this one in here is the version that I'd like members to approve tonight.
That's fine.
And I've slipped in.
We've got two Ecom Days, two meetings in succession at the beginning of January. The ninth and the 16th of January 23.
Is it meant to find that in the six weeks in 23?
I don't think that's correct, because we don't need, we don't need a week after that one, three weeks is the normal gap. And if I can just explain the Budget Working Group, which I'll put on the annual meeting agenda. And to form a budget working group, I think it might be a good idea if we had a budget working group which consisted of at least the chair of the committee whose budget we were going to discuss, and they've been scheduled on purpose before each committee meeting. The budget working group will have a look at the budget with some suggestions from the chair. And 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 look at, look at actually their action plan, hopefully from the strategic plan that will get adopted. And the working group will recommend that to the community development agenda, it will be discussed again. And and if it's sort of signed off, recommended to the finance working group who will look at it. And and so on and so forth, right through all of the committees. So that means each committee is studied and looked at by a working group right to the end. So there'll be several budget meetings, but to make it easy is splitting it down to committees. So you can have a look, so if you've got your strategic plan, each committee will have an actions, an action plan. So you can check on the action plan, what needs to be thought about within the budget. So that's why I've I've put a budget working group within the main calendar of meetings. So I think it would be helpful for council, it's split down and it's a bit more of a process where more people are involved at more stages. There's a lot to say for nothing, I just.
Everybody clear, councillor Morton?
Actually, I was really pleased to see the budget working group there, I think that'll, that'll be a really, really good help the next, next budget. Is there a time meeting on the 28th, March 2022? That's on the, on the website, is that still?
Because that's this minute's career, yeah.
The budget when you've got asset management amenities, it's the first of October, that's a Saturday, is that? What to? First of October, asset management amenities coming down. Oh, sorry, budget working group, that's a Saturday, is that meant to be?
Right, it needs to be, could you know when it should be, when we said? It will be the week before the Asset Management and Immunities Committee meet, which will be. Yeah. It should be, do you think that should be the 11th? Anymore?
I was just going to say, I, I actually say semi-death at times, but this is a resolution, there's two Ecom Days, so they both happen.
No, they're not, we'll, we'll amend it. The ninth will happen because we won't have had one since December.
Ninth will happen. So let's come back from that long holiday sometime for the ninth. It's not Saturday.
What, first?
Not 17th.
Yeah.
It's the Monday.
Yeah, we're looking at the first.
The first, we've got a budget working group in for the first, that should be the 10th.
Thank you, just have. Um, we've got the budget being discussed on the 21st of November in finance and admin performance. And then, so I don't see why that couldn't go for approval on the 19th of December, other than, especially if we're doing all earlier and that. Because I, I thought the 30th of January would be too late, and we have to have special concessions, which we can have.
Special concessions, actually, local government law stipulates that we have until the 1st of March to get our preset request to principal authority. However, it's normal to set budget in January, but that said, this year that didn't happen. It's not set in stone that it has to be the January meeting. I think it depends whether council is comfortable, the finance committee feel that council can make a fully informed decision on the 19th of December. Yeah, so it's not set in stone, yeah.
Just the way it was all that together, and, you know, we haven't got a way to the 30th.
That's fine, thank you.
So we, we're happy to. Approve.
Yes, subject to a couple of.
But I guess if there's something discovered, it can be.
Yeah.
Sorry, there was one just more thing, we haven't got a date for the mayor's ceremony.
Yeah, we have, that's the annual meeting. Meeting, that's what the mayor making ceremony is, the annual meeting.
Just guest request really, then, and you guys sort it all out, they'll come back to us.
Oh, yes, as soon as it's done, we'll send it out by email, it'll be on the website.
So, yeah.
And I can't promise that we won't put a little error in for you to find, then we know you've checked it.
So, so, yeah, so we all need to, it's more important that we check and agree what's actually on the website, isn't it? Because we are all going to use that.
There have been some issues with the website, particularly in relation to the environment, climate work. It's only to be, I'm relying on the website. That's not something I was going to raise at this meeting here, it's not specifically on the agenda. But that working group has stepped out and has put on to it, there's nothing from the meetings.
Which working group?
Climate Working Group.
Yes, I'm, I'm not, I've known about that, sadly, we want them, we shouldn't quite use those words, you know, where I was at the meeting, so I haven't heard details of it. So I'm getting on this.
So that wasn't a problem with the website, it was a problem with the content.
Something, it's been captured on the website, we showed that meeting.
Okay.
I captured my website, I didn't show that meeting.
It is on the website.
So that, that's why it's really major concern that that's something you're coming up.
John, you did that. Thank you very much. But we need to, uh, how to address that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to the officers that service it.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, those, uh, this has been proposed, shared and seconded by councillor Otley. All in favour, please? Thank you. Investment strategy po- uh, policy, um, you'll have read that, sure? In the, uh, the information pack. Um, so that is the recommendation from the internal auditor. And, uh, yes, we need to, uh, approve the. So. Who questions anybody? So.
Investment what?
Investment strategy. It's just what you do with surplus funds and.
Yeah, it is detailed.
Like stocks and bonds, baby.
Oh, gosh, no, no.
Few lottery tickets.
Well, all you did come up here to me is that there's something that is like eighty five thousand pounds that's going to, that's going to be used in the power bank. So there's not a lot of power bank goes plus. This was actually a big issue when I was director of Wales, who's from his back.
Yeah.
But I think we're probably using sensible place banks that we can trust and not using the, uh, Bank of Ants and Decks.
Right.
But I don't think they'd, um, they'd get through the, uh, credit checks, credit ratings that we've casted off in play.
Yeah. I was a question at that point, so, you know, this was another big issue over some money that was invested in high school.
Hmm, yeah, obviously. I can remember a few big councils got caught out. Yes, they did. Yes.
So it's been proposed, it's been seconded and, uh, let's have a vote, please.
You proposed it.
That's, um, I proposed it.
Yeah, Colin, I didn't see you second it.
Oh, okay. Right, uh, all in favour, please? Yeah, sorry, that, that wasn't trying to push that. Right, um, right, uh, item fifteen, provision of computer use by members of the public. This is downstairs in the forty eight, that's what I. No, I says no cost. Is any cost change?
I mean, I spoke to John the other day. He said he wanted a laptop, a, a monitor and.
Yeah, yeah, full size monitor and keeper, which we don't have. We do sell the laptop.
We'd have to purchase everything. And also, we need to be very careful about just allowing anyone onto our internet, onto our system. And I'm not sure about the bit where training or support, our staff might not always have the time to sit with someone and help them free.
So does this need more consideration?
Well, I'd like, I, I did my first question is what, what financial implications are there and what are the, uh, you know?
Oh.
We've got a cybersecurity policy. We've got all of that, but if we're just allowing people open access to the internet.
Right, okay, got, once you're.
We need to, I think we need to have a bit more.
All right, so, okay. So.
Yeah, just say my, my immediate thought, uh, I, you know, it's over the last week or so is that we have, um, the state funded provision of computers in the town in the form of the library. And I understand they'll be maintained when it goes to the, um, campus. So could we not, um, direct people to the sort of, uh, publicly funded provision of computers already in town?
Like, I think we do this already, don't we?
We do, yeah, we would, yeah.
Yeah, uh, councillor Mortimer?
I was going to say the same thing. Is it, is it really necessary? We've got the night. I mean, staff are very helpful.
They're also trained to do it.
Yeah.
Councillor Alford?
Actually, on the art cafe, they also do help in being one scientist. Not plenty here already.
I think it's not necessary. I think many people have got kids who are already at home or they can go to the library. Not only that, anybody who comes in, doesn't have to leave, I'm just going to take that stuff on. And they're, they're going to end up asking them verbally anyway. So I think it's a little bit of waste.
I think the feeling behind this originally was that there wouldn't be any cost involved that we would use what was already here. But there are, there are other issues that, yeah, okay, uh, councillor.
In terms of some help with using, um, these things, I mean, it's identified the art house cafe, just some training. That's something we could have on our, um, virtual community hub and it's, I think it's probably an, an issue identified here. And if we could place some, any information flyer that we could have in the foyer or something, I think it's, it's identifying a problem. I think it's probably a different solution.
As councillor Orfitt?
Um, I propose then that we refuse. Okay, I'll see.
Um, yeah, councillor Reddick?
I was just going to ask here, with, with talk, I was at a meeting the other week talking about the, uh, virtual hub and whatever, and talking there about how that would. So, you know, the, the intent was to just press a button and it comes up with something that people can print and take away. I would certainly recommend that this here without a printer doesn't fulfill that. But then I would say, does that team there and that subgroup was committed to do that? What do they think? What's their opinion about this, this computer here from that subgroup that was set up?
Right, well, it's good.
Do I answer tonight? So I can answer if you want. Do you want to answer tonight? Shall I, can I speak?
Um, councillor?
Uh, yes, it will help. I mean, that, that, that was a talk ages ago of seeing what we could do with the.
Web page.
Web page, but there was the, um, oh, God, I'm going to shit myself, not remembering the name. What's the little building near the first office? The Ryan House. Yeah, it's easy, no, I mean, okay, so the Ryan House, uh, building, there was talk of turning that into some sort of thing later on. And, and I think probably then is the time that this should come back to actually not.
Yep. So, okay, so, uh, are we gonna, we want to vote on this?
Well, councillor Alfred's opposed, councillor A, P A and P A, it gets very confusing.
Right.
When you're trying to do short.
They propose that we.
Yeah, um, we need to go to the book, yeah.
So we're voting on refusing it?
Yeah, I think it's, it's more in a bayance, pending what happens with the virtual hub. So we're not sort of like rejecting.
So we're, we're, we're.
We're not going to do this as it's.
No, so we're going to, we're going to postpone it or, um, what's, what's.
I'm just qualifying it.
Okay, so all in favour of leaving it for the moment? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, right, uh, the point you were sent to victory, what?
So you're, you're offering, you're not.
No, I'm offering.
Right.
Is that going away?
Councillor Aides?
At the Westwood.
Does councillor Aides have any competition?
Somebody needs to propose.
I'll second it.
All, all in favour, please? Councillor Aides, you are a representative.
Was supporting.
You're not voting against.
I supported twice.
Um, emergency plan, uh. Uh, it was unanimous.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Emergency plan, um, quite a detailed plan, um.
Need to approve it.
Anybody, any comments on the plan at this stage? So, seconded by councillor Otley, all in favour of accepting the plan? Thank you. Well, subject to the completion of the.
Yeah, I mean, it's, emergency plan is something that you're constantly.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Right, last item, um, accepting at or receiving the report from the, uh, Barts Canal Trust and the, uh, rough notes from the Swindon Rock Sir Chair Canal Partnership.
The information then.
Yeah, just. Right, that is it. Thank you very much.
It's not easy being well. That's not criticizing, because I know what it's like, you know, it's not easy. Because you're sort of into the meat.